For those of you who are looking on the agenda, we're going to insert item number 28 at this point before we get into the consent agenda. And that has to do with a presentation by Mr. Ron Hobbs regarding the renovation and addition to the recreation center. Mr. Alfrink, would you like to introduce this subject?
In March of last year, the city manager and a team of the directors interviewed a number of architectural firms who would begin the design phase of the renovation of our recreation center, which is located just about a block west of here. I believe about seven firms applied. It was narrowed down to three. Presentations were reviewed, and Mr. Hobbs in his firm was selected. Since that time, Mr. Hobbs and George Fowler, our parks director, have visited with the Parks and Recreation Board with members of the community and members of our youth sports associations on a number of occasions. And they have tried to find a solution within our budget and within the confines of the land that we have available at the Parks and Recreation Center site that would best suit the needs of this city for a great number of years into the future. Tonight, we have a chance to see what those plans are, and we also will have a chance for the citizens who are here tonight to make their own suggestions and comments regarding this plan. And at that, Mr. Hobbs, if you would like to proceed, please go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to allow me to come here and talk to you this evening. Before I start talking about the plans and our design, I want to take just a moment to expand upon a couple of things. We've had the opportunity over the past few months to meet with the park board, the staff numerous times. We've received input on what needed to be designed, what kind of rooms and activities we wanted to house in this building. And we've had some of the best meetings that I've ever had with the park board. The park board has -- the last meeting we had went on for over two hours, and the time just flew by. The questions, the suggestions were all direct and right to the point, and everything that we've done with their leadership and their input, I think, has improved the projects. I'm very pleased with this. A couple of things, just as some base reference material. You have currently 13,400 square feet in round numbers in the existing building. The building was built in the 1960s, mid-'60s, if I remember correctly. And it was designed like all recreation centers were at that time. It was basically concrete block, hard surfaces inside, and basically, again, designed for youth and kids for games and activities. One of the things that happened during that period was rec. centers would have a few rooms that were called multipurpose rooms that you could use for other purposes, community meetings or other types of events like that. As in other cities and other places that we've seen, the rooms that you have currently don't work well like that. The building is very noisy. It gets a tremendous amount of use. I was over there just a few minutes before coming to the council briefing, and I don't know how many hundreds of people were there, but they seemed like they were everywhere. One of the things that we're trying to do with this building is design this building in such a way that when it's finished, it is not a new building attached to an old building, but this is a new facility. I think that for the money and the budget that you have and the square footage that we're adding and the renovation work and really some change in direction of what we're talking about inside, this will truly be a first-class building. We're adding 13,000 square feet to the building. And so if you can just picture the building being over 26,000 square feet, that's going to be just an excellent facility for you. The drawing that we have here, and since the council's seen it, if it's all right, we'll face the audience with it. This is the existing floor plan. The big room that you see up in this area is the gymnasium. There's two arts and crafts room, one sort of small alcove in this area that is a game area. There's bumper pool tables and things like that. There's a multipurpose room back here. And if you can imagine, if you haven't been in the building, it's painted concrete block. It's terrazzo floors or vinyl tile and some acoustical ceilings. And what that means is it's like a giant echo chamber. When you're in there trying to do something other than basically make noise, you can't hear what you're doing because of the noise. And that's kind of, that's healthy because that tells us that the children and the people using the building enjoy it. What we're proposing to do, though, is rearrange it to make the building easier to control from a staffing standpoint and provide a facility that has quite a bit more variety in the uses. When this is finished, we're going to have -- George, if you don't mind, let's flip it over to the next plan. We're going to add another gymnasium. We're going to add a fitness and weight room so that people that like to work out will have a space to do that with. We're going to have a real, a true multipurpose room that's designed for either community meetings, parties, business meetings, community club affairs, different types of things. And that's this space here. And again, it's considerably bigger than the room that you have at the moment. We're going to have two different types of arts and crafts rooms. We're going to have an exercise or jazzercise room, a room that's very conducive to physical exercise. It's located by the front door so that it's easy to get to, and people coming and going from it don't have to walk all the way through the building to get there. There will be new restrooms. And then there's going to be some offices for the staff, as well as a conference room that also is, call it programmable space. That means that if somebody wanted to use a conference room for a small gathering, it would be available. The office space, everything in the building is zoned. And by that, I mean that areas that need to be closest to the doors or placed closest to the doors, the areas that generate the most noise and activity, they're grouped together. And the noise, the facilities that need to be or the rooms that need to be the quietest are removed from the noisy ones. One of the major features in this building, let's go to the next drawing. One of the major features in this building is it will no longer have one entrance off of the west side of the building, but it'll have two. The east side of the building gets a lot of traffic in which children cross the street coming from the school, walk around the building and come in from the west side, use it, and then go back to the park. And so what we're proposing is that in this area, this is Broadway here, that there's going to be an intermediate roof line. And that's important because the sort of serpentine wall that you see there contains the public lobby and the public space. Instead of having a nine-foot ceiling, which is what the building currently has, this is going to enable us to have about a 14-foot ceiling and make it a much airier, brighter space for people to use. The activity rooms, the arts and crafts, multipurpose, those rooms that we've talked about, are going to be located along the north side of the building, which allows north light to come in. It'll be a very, very nice, very even, natural light. And then the other sides of the building where the sunlight is harsher, basically, the glass will be more restricted in those areas. Children now can come across the street, come in the east end, and go through the building rather than walk down the street and go around the building to get in the building. They can go through the building and go ahead and go out to the park from the west side. The courtyard, George, if you'd point out the courtyard there, that's where the east end of the, excuse me, the east end of the building is where it's offset. There's a large pecan tree there that we're building a courtyard around so that that area can also be used as spillover space for the multipurpose room. Again, what we're trying to do here is not totally guess at everything that's going to be going on in here, because I think that it's been my experience that when you get a new facility and one that's planned for a variety of community activities, that you're going to find new ways to use this building and new activities. And so one of the things that we'd really like to do is to make sure that this building works not only for the children and for the recreation activities and be an improvement on what you currently have, but also to have a building that serves all other age groups and all of the needs within the city, which you currently don't have. And then the final drawing that I want to show you is the lobby space. If you can picture, as I was talking to the council earlier, and I'll use this room now as an example, this room has a 10-foot ceiling in it. The existing building has a nine-foot ceiling. If you can picture a nine-foot tall ceiling in a room that's over 100 feet long and anywhere from 20 to 30 feet in width, it would feel like a tunnel. And that's not what we want. So what we're doing is in the public lobby space, we're elevating that, as you can see, with good visibility. All of the major rooms, with the exception of some things like the exercise room, will have glass so that you can see from the lobby into the rooms. And then the clear story, which is this elevated light facing north, allows natural light back into the public spaces. So what you're going to see when we're finished is a totally new, totally different recreation center. But I think what it's going to do is going to not only provide you with more modernized facilities to do the things that you're doing now, but it's going to give you a great facility to do things that you're not doing now. So, Mayor, with that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
Okay. I think, first of all, we'll open this up to members of the audience. If any of you has questions or observations to make regarding the presentation Mr. Hobbs has made, if you will, come forward to the lectern area. And if you will, state your name and address for the record. And please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Ray Eklund. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. I'm really impressed with the design. Not that I'm an architect or anything, but the simplicity of it, you know, the construction will be better on our budget and things. I think we'll get more square feet for, more bang for our buck. The only fancy thing in it is the serpentine wall, which is not really a big deal. I believe it's going to be a very nice airy design for us and kind of a modern effect that, you know, a new kind of a structure for us at a reasonable cost, it looks like to me. And maybe the designer can address that to the council.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. There's no one else in the audience wishing to ask questions or make comments regarding the presentation? We'll open now to the council, questions, comments for Mr. Hobbs. And after he's answered any questions or comments you have, then we'll entertain a motion regarding item number 28 on the agenda. Councilmember Henderson?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be in line for a motion if there's no questions.
Okay. I believe no one, Councilmember Markham, second. We're not quite ready for the motion yet.
I thought he was.
Well, he's ready to make it, but he had not made it at that time. I think no one else has. Councilmember Williams, did you have a question or comment before the motion?
Well, I don't, I know there's probably going to be a motion in a second. I just want to do, say thanks to George Fowler and his employees, the city manager and all the park board that put a lot of hours in on this, a lot of study. And I just, I think there's been a lot of preparation done to it. And I think the council had the advantage of watching a PowerPoint presentation while ago on pre-council. And I don't think these pictures, I'm not looking at the pictures he's looking at, but I know the pictures he's got on that easel can nowhere magnify what we saw in the background ago. And I think the park board's done a real well job on this.
We have some exciting things that's going to be taking place over the recreation center.
You certainly do.
Thanks to your work in the park. We appreciate that. Councilmember Henderson, are you ready for a motion?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the presentation of the improvements to the rec. center as they were proposed by Mr. Hobbs.
Okay. We have a motion. Councilmember Markham, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? If you will, gentlemen, register your votes, and I will displace those votes. And the vote passes by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Mayor, I appreciate it. Council, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs.
We move now to the consent agenda. That is item number one through 20. The items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. And approval of this consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I'll be voting to approve the consent agenda, but abstaining from items number 10 and 11.
Okay. I believe item number five was to be pulled for separate discussion. Is that correct?
Right.
Does your motion so reflect?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion. Councilmember Jennings?
I would just like that the motion taken into consideration the changes regarding first and second reading on the agenda items we discussed in pre-council.
Okay. Councilmember Hurley?
That was for a second.
Councilmember Williams?
I was just going to make the corrections.
Okay. Are we clear on what the motion is?
Yes.
Okay. If you will, gentlemen, register your vote for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item number five, and we'll pull off for special discussion with Councilmember Avery abstaining on items 10 and 11. And that passes by unanimous vote. Councilmember Williams, I believe you first requested that we pull item number five.
Yes, sir. Last council meeting, we took some action on a first reading for amendment to our building for portable buildings or storage buildings. And I promised some residents that I would let them be here and have some input on that. And on such short notice, they weren't able to make it, so I'll extend that opportunity. This is where, we have 180-day moratorium on portable buildings now, with the exception of those that are under 120 square foot. I think that's right, Mr.? And the maximum height on these at this time, before we did this ordinance, could have been up to 10-foot. And we dropped them back to 12-foot.
That is correct.
I have Mr. and Mrs. Pittsers here tonight. I don't know which one of them are going to speak, but they want to be in the, he's pointing to Mrs. Pittsers, I guess up there. They were going to speak on this object. They're also going to give some details of things that have gone on around their house and the reason that they feel that we should keep the height of these buildings down. And so I'd like to extend them the opportunity to be able to come forward and speak. And I apologize for having done our last week and not having you here.
Mr. Pliska, before you all come forward, we have two speakers' cards on this subject, as well as you wishing to speak on that. Is there anything you need to say in introducing this subject?
Just briefly, Mayor, we brought this before council. This is the second reading on this item. And we brought this before council on January the 8th. Discussions have been ensuing during the update of the comprehensive land use plan and the city zoning ordinance rewrite of the concern of accessory buildings in residential areas. And it had been P&amp;Z's wish to address that issue due to the moratorium. We looked at this, and we will continue to look at this as we're doing the zoning ordinance rewrite. But they looked at it, felt like 16 feet was too high for these structures, particularly as development goes on, lots get smaller. Therefore, P&amp;Z looked at this issue and then decided to recommend to the council that we reduce these accessory structures down to 12 feet. And again, these are temporary accessory structures, not permanent, which would be on a fixed foundation. So these are temporary that are not on a fixed foundation and are considerable, considered portable or accessory buildings at 12-foot high.
Okay.
Could he go ahead and add and tell us what does make it a stationary building and not a temporary?
The fact that it is on a foundation.
Right.
Right. And that would be an engineered foundation. Some, when we say engineered foundation, that could mean a fixed foundation, but also some foundations include parent beam. So therefore, what we're looking at is something along the lines of that it's not a fixed or permanent foundation.
What about plumbing or electrical?
That we're getting into the code issue, and I'd have to defer to code. But we do allow electrical, it's my understanding. We do allow plumbing. It just gets to the point where it appears to be a temporary or permanent residence. That code will come in and then study the issue more carefully.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have two speakers' cards that have been filled out, Mr. Ray Eklund and Karen. And we'll get to those in just a moment. But if you would come forward at this time, I believe you had a, one of you had a presentation to make, as Councilmember Williams indicated. And if you will, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I'm here again to tell you I'm Karen Pittsir, 3929 Lockspur Drive. And I am in an agreement with the council's position in amending the current ordinance reflecting the size of temporary structures. But I also have a few questions tonight for the council regarding the 12-foot-high buildings. Our property line, as you know from our last presentation we were here, is shared with a neighbor behind us who built a 320-square-foot building, which is 16 feet high. Portable barn-style building, which is less than 10 feet from our fence line and 45 feet from our home. Last time you saw a picture of the building and relatively proportionate from the fence, which is six feet in how high the building was and to the size of a man on top. So I'm going to refer this picture later on in my presentation, but I just wanted to note that again. I also want to note that our home was built from all the windows in the rearview to look out into our backyard. And now our backyard looks at the 16-foot-high structure, which is now 10 feet above our fence line. This is the view that we see from the windows in our family room. And as a result of this, we will incur property loss on the home should we ever choose to sell it, despite whatever enhancements we put into it internally or externally. So what I would like to say here today is imagine the Denton Highway Bridge or the Halton Road Bridge on 820 being looked at from your windows in your home, because that's how high those bridges are, and that's how high this building is that stares down into our backyard. So if anybody's interested, this is the views from our house. I have a question about the 12-foot-high, because I don't know the standard 12-foot-high building is appropriate for the reasons of the irregular lot sizes. Many lots in our community are very narrow. They are not very deep. And a building such as this would even be more of an intrusion than it is on our own lot. I also want to note that we had a signed deed and covenant in our neighborhood that everyone signed with the best of intentions that those would be honored and be protected by those. Unfortunately, it's not the case because this ordinance is in place and because there is not a homeowners association at this time. We bought our property here in Halton City with the understanding that we would be protected from structures like this being on top of us. And we did pay more money for the lot that we have so that we would not have a house on top of us. Now we have a 16-foot-high storage building. The city council informed us in the December council meeting that there is only one city in the state of Texas that looks into deeds and restrictions before issuing a permit. And so my question to the city council is, do what, for what purpose do these signed documents have? Because those of us who are signing these documents, when we go to buy a piece of property, are under the understanding that we'll be protected from things such as this happening. So I would like to know, they're filed with the county, and why they're not even looked at or reviewed. According to a landscape architect, a real estate agent, and a broker, we will be suffering a property loss as a result of this building. And that would not matter if it was a 16-foot building or whether it was a 12-foot building. The very reason why is that, with the exception of playhouses or standard storage sheds, any building that rises above the fence line will suffer, the shared property will suffer a loss. If you look at this picture, which I showed in the last council meeting when we were here, this shows how high the building currently is, which is 16 feet high. If it's lowered to 12 feet, it would only be slightly above this red line. This would still be how high the building would be. So my question is, why would a 10-by-20-foot building still require a 12-foot-high ceiling or height? Why not 8, 9, or even 10 feet? I'd like to know why that was recommended. I would ask that the council maybe consider a fellow northeast community or city that has a policy procedure in existence where a building, if it is so many square feet and so high, they have to be so many feet back from the shared fence owner's property. And I would like to know if the city council would consider a policy such as that. I don't feel a standard 12-foot building even maybe is appropriate for certain progressive neighborhoods that are being built in Halton City with the irregular lot sizes again and the deeds and covenants that are being given out to homeowners in their intent when they purchase these homes, the property values, the lot sizes, dimensions, as I just stated. But I think all that can still be met and still meet the needs of those who have storage issues. I'd like to say again that I respect the intent and the needs of our neighbor. But I also have to say that it is disheartening to us because we have put a lot of time and money into our backyard to enhance our property value and to know that nothing that we do further to our home will help us gain back the property loss which we're going to incur. And I'd like to state that that not only affects us, it will affect the city when we sell our house. So I'm speaking on behalf of all of those who've put the enjoyment and the time and the money into their backyards and their property to make this a more attractive community. And I would like, as a citizen of Halton City, to express that I hope that the city council will understand our concerns, that we don't want to, if we ever have to move to another location in Halton City, to have to face this again. So I would like to see this changed. It has not been an easy experience for us to hear that we will have a property loss. It has been an emotional impact for us, and it has also been a lot of neighborhood dissension as a result of this, because it not only affects us, it affects several of our neighbors next to us and down the, down the street from us as well. I also know that this is a 50-year ordinance that is being changed. I would hate to think that my kids, if they ever decide to stay here in Halton City, would ever have to face this, too. It's not been an easy experience. I know that there isn't anything we can do about our property right now, but I, again, would like to speak up and state my case so that others in Halton City do not have to experience what we have. I'd like the city to consider the expansion of progressive neighborhoods and communities. And as these neighborhoods are built and the developments are made, the lots are going to continue to be smaller. And therefore, I would like the city council to reflect in that as well. And I hope that they will also reflect in the needs of all of its citizens and its taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from members of the council? Councilmember Williams?
First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Pittsir for coming out and voicing her opinion on this. Something, I guess, I don't know if I need to ask James or who. She spoke of another city that has a way to address this, only, and this goes to the attorney, too. I know deed restrictions in these developments are put together, and that's one of the selling point of these properties, when they sell the property to the, I've been out and talking with some of the Pittsers, neighbors out there, and they do have deed restrictions in their property deeds that prohibit what is in her backyard. Our ordinance doesn't cover that. We approve these subdivisions when they go in. Why do the cities never take that in consideration when they do that?
Deed restrictions or covenants are generally a tighter restriction that are given the neighborhood control of a subdivision. And it's done through the title process. For example, a country club with its restrictions can be located in a city with its ordinances. Therefore, it's not behooved the city to enforce those local or neighborhood covenants. Therefore, it's not behooved the city to enforce those local or neighborhood covenants or restrictions. That is due to the civil process, as I believe Mr. Olson will point out. We, on the other hand, in the planning and zoning department, our job is to enforce the city's zoning ordinance requirements. Generally, you could look at a substantial amount of the deeds, restrictions, or covenants in certain areas as you put your ordinances together, but you've got to think of the total population, the total mass, and your ratio of your lot sizes as you draw these ordinances up together. So they interact with each other, but it's under my assumption, and under my belief, that when they contradict, the ordinance must take precedence.
Okay. And another question for you, and this may be for somebody in ZBA. Mr. Hurley can probably answer this. On carports, if a person wants a carport, in other words, if the Pittsirs wanted to have a carport, what would they have to do to get a carport? They'd have to go before the zoning board of adjustment, would they not?
Yes, they would have come before the zoning board of adjustment for approval.
Is, and this is, and I'll tell the citizens that we're working on the ordinances right now to try to clean these up. Would it be possible to put in that ordinance that only exists excessive high? Of course, they can do that anyway. If they got 12 foot to the ordinance and they want 16, can they go before the ZBA and get a 16-foot?
Yes, you could go before the ZBA and petition for a variance to that, to that section of the ordinance.
So if you want to, you could cut this back to like 10-foot? And how that is where you would have to go before the ZBA for anything. 10-foot would put it four foot above the fence, but still you would have your arc on it, which would leave the walls even lower. You would probably be a foot, foot and a half above that. And I believe the reason for going the higher on the buildings is for the wider buildings to get the run of the water to go out. But on a sharp building, like 16-foot wide, I don't know how much.
I'm not a builder, and I would have to defer to the building inspections, but I could just relay the discussions that took place at planning and zoning. And those were the fact that they were considering, a normal wall is eight-foot high. A normal sheet of plywood is four by eight. Studs are generally placed two feet apart. Therefore, you've, it's more economical to build in that stature. A standard gable for an eight-foot-high wall is four by 12 truss. So that was why they selected the 12 feet, in terms of what the discussion centered around the building economics of it.
And I might clear up a matter with the Pittsirs, the reason we put this on. The buildings that were 120-foot and less were not covered by the moratorium because they don't acquire a permit. Am I right?
That is true.
But they could still build a 16-foot before we change the ordinance. And that's the reason we came to the 12-foot for something right now to hold. And James tells me that we're about 85% complete with this. And I think the Pittsirs would like to have some input on this when we go to PNC, so we'd like to notify them where they could be a part of it.
Absolutely. We will continue to have these discussions at the planning and zoning meetings between now and mid-April. So we'd like to have any type of input during.
Councilmember Williams, anything further?
That's all I have. I appreciate y'all coming out.
Members of the council, any questions, comments regarding the presentation made? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray Eklund, I believe you have a request to address the council on this subject.
This is Mr. Mayor, Ray Eklund. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace, in part of the older part of the Halton City. I certainly understand the citizens in the northern parts concerned over this building. I've actually seen a picture of it. I haven't seen the building and their lot size and their homes up there. I wanted to address the fact that this is the second reading, and this is our last and best opportunity to try to get our input to the council before we put the gab along the thing and make it go. I attended the pre-council meeting, and I heard Councilman Williams correctly allude to the fact of lot sizes. And I've heard that comment several times here. While the lots up north are maybe a quarter acre, the lots in the south are an acre, two acres, some in excess of that, they're spread all over the large old farm communities. Okay? And the impact in our neighborhood, you could put a 16-foot, 320-square-foot building in the back of some of these lots and never see it. Okay? While at the same time, it's an eyesore for some neighborhoods, it's really just a matter of course in other neighborhoods. I think it's very important that the council consider the lot size, for the exact same reason that they have covenants in their neighborhood to protect what they see as a progressive neighborhood. In my neighborhood, you know, we like our buildings out back and, you know, my lawnmower is the size of some people's car, because that's what I happen to have. We can't forget the people that put Halton City on the map and the properties down there. And I understand the new people that come to town and they have their vision of the future, and we're down there working every day. Those of you that have been down in our neck of the woods know that it's a full-time job to trim those bushes and the trees and all that kind of stuff. It's a whole big operation to make these kinds of lots look nice, and it's rather overwhelming. From the pre-council, we heard that 60 notices were sent out. Y'all are going to be dealing with that in a moment on three different properties, asking for building variances. There were six, a total of 60 notices. There were two objections out of 60. And that's not very many, right? And one of those objections, from what I heard, he objected to anything above the fence line. When I stand next to the fence, I'm above the fence line. I don't think that's reasonable, to have somebody have a thing that done go above the fence line. So you're just simply not going to make some people happy, okay? Eight-foot walls plus the pitch in the roof that was addressed, that's going to give you one kind of building. It's going to give you a four, six pitch, and I don't think we should all have things that all look the same. You know, when I go down the airport freeway, there's all kinds of little gazebo building places down there that sell to the citizens of Tarrick County. And they're all different. They're neat-looking. You know, there's some this way and some that way, different pitches on the roof. Let's be careful about how we limit. 12-foot is going to limit us to one kind of thing, okay? And we're all going to look the same. And one of the things I saw in Mr. Plisca's office on the wall had something to do with our environment and the ability to have different kinds of buildings and different things in our community, so we have a mismatch. So we all look like Levittown. We don't all look the same, okay? I don't consider my neighborhood unprogressive just because we're old. You know, we got 40-foot pecan trees down there. We got beautiful things, right? And if your neighbor plants a 40-foot pecan tree and blocks your view of what you think, then what are you going to do? I don't know. Property rights are really a matter of opinion, and value is a matter of opinion, okay? While one person may feel that this building harms their property value, the next guy may never pay attention to it and looking forward to build one just like it because he enhances it. He feels that enhances his building, his property. I'd just like to ask the council, before you adopt this thing, to do some kind of a look at lot ratios or setbacks or some kind of thing, so that the people that have been here and need the larger, taller buildings, right, would have the right to go ahead and do that. Lastly, the ZBA variance that you spoke about, that's an expensive thing. I've had to go through that before on some other projects, right? It's a very encumbrance thing to the public if it's not necessary, okay? And we need to come to some kind of rule of reason, so that, I think 10-foot's unreasonably short, frankly, okay? So that we don't draw the line too low, that everybody's got to pay money to get what they should be able to get anyway. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Williams?
I just want to tell Mr. Eklund, I appreciate you coming out. But what we're doing right now is just a temporary deal on the 120-foot and under is dropping there from 16 to 12. This isn't going to be in stone. When we're doing the reroute of the ordinance, we're going to take in consideration, or I hope that we're going to take in consideration, the demographics of where the building's going to go, the lot size and all that will be considered.
Our next and final speaker, who's requested to address the council on the subject, is Karen, and I don't have a last name.
That was her that turned it in.
Okay.
I believe, wasn't it, Ms. Pittsir?
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I appreciate that. Gentlemen, you have heard the input of the individuals who had requested to speak on the subject. Any questions for council, any questions for either our counselor or from staff before we receive a motion? There being none, I'm in line to receive a motion regarding item number five on the consent agenda. Councilmember Williams?
May I be approved?
Councilmember Avery?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve any discussion on the motion. If you will, display your votes, gentlemen, and it passes by unanimous vote. The consent agenda items have been addressed, and we move now to the next portion of our agenda, and that is the visitors and citizens forum. And I don't believe, Ms. Harris, we have anyone who had requested to speak during this time period. It takes us now to item number 21, and this is a public hearing. We have seven public hearings tonight, and we'll proceed through the process one at a time. The first one, item number 21, Mr. Alfred.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first three that we have each pertain to the temporary buildings and issue that was just discussed. The very first one, item number 21, is to consider and or take action regarding holding a public hearing and approval of a request for a variance from the 180-day moratorium on outside storage buildings of Mr. Philip Cahill.
Okay, the public hearing is opened at this time, and if you will, give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Philip Cahill. I live at 5715 Colorado Court. I'm requesting a variance from the from the moratorium for a 240-square-foot storage building. I have a 10,000-square-foot lot. My backyard alone is over 3,000 square feet. The total building height would be 10 feet, 3 inches. The paint on the building and the roofing material would be done so as to match the main structure as closely as possible. Unlike a lot of the people here, I don't want mine to stand out. My side lot, I'm on a corner lot. My side fence is six feet tall. My back fence is eight feet tall. So I think the building would pretty much be hidden from anyone who was passing by in an automobile. It would be readily visible from neighbors with a two-story house. My plan is for a rather conservative building. As I said, the, this is basically it, only it'd be an oyster color to match the house. The window treatments would all be changed so that they also would look more like the house. Roofing material also should match the house. So that is my request.
Okay. Members of the council, any question for Mr. Cahill? Thank you, Mr. Cahill.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against this request for a building variance Mr. Cahill has brought forth? There being none, I close the public hearing, and I'm in line for a motion, gentlemen. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve the variance.
Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Williams?
I've got one question for Mr. Plisca. We got two, and we've got two letters opposed to this. One of them's two streets over, one of them's probably directly across the street from the back of Mr. Cahill's house.
That is correct.
Did they happen to say why they opposed it, or just opposed?
The second opposition just didn't want anything over the fence.
Is that the one closest to the property?
I believe so. I can verify that file behind. 31 property owners were notified, eight were in favor, and we had two against.
This is going to set up closer to the back of his house, way back from the street.
You should have in your packet there.
Right, I'm looking at it.
The exact location where Mr. Pittsir's going to put, or excuse me, Mr. Cahill's going to put this, and.
And the next-door neighbor on the north did not send a, anything as far as in opposed?
No, only two were in opposition.
That's all I need to know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything further in the way of discussion? If you will, register your votes, gentlemen. And the vote carries by a unanimous vote. Item number 22, Mr. Alfred.
Mr. Mayor, item number 22 is also for a variance on the current moratorium that we have. This particular one is to finish construction on a 10-by-16-by-12-foot-high storage building located southwest corner of Western Circle and Dunson Drive. It was already begun, the construction, by Teresa Smith. When our code enforcement people noticed the construction and asked her to cease and desist at that time, she did comply with it, with us. She spoke at the last meeting, and the council suggested to her that she bring this variance request forward to us for us to have a chance to consider.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at this time. Ms. Smith, are you in the audience? Do you wish to address the council at this time, or just be available for questions? Okay. Members of the council, any questions for Ms. Smith on this request for variance? There being none, members of the audience, anyone wishing to speak either for or against Ms. Smith's request for a variance on this accessory storage building? There being none, I'll close the public hearing. And gentlemen, I'm ready to receive a motion regarding this item. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I approve variance 002-02.
Councilmember Williams?
I've got one question for James Plisca again on that.
Need a second before we proceed.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Williams, second. And now, Councilmember Williams, your questions.
Okay. You sent out the notices within 200 foot of this property?
That is correct, 16%.
16%? And how many did you receive?
Staff received nine in favor and zero against.
What I need to know.
Any further questions?
What I just wanted to point out is these people within 200 foot have been notified, the property owners that are close, that have been that close, have been notified and had an input on this. And that's the reason we are approving this to be done, or that's the reason it's up to be approved. I don't know if it'll be approved or not.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. If you will, register your votes, gentlemen. And that is a unanimous vote. Item 23, Mr. Alfred.
Mr. Mayor, this is the last of our requests for variances from this ordinance on the temporary storage buildings. This is from Charles and Sandra Hardy, who are constructing a 12-by-16-by-12-foot-high accessory storage building located on the north side of Fossil Drive, containing approximately 10,140 square feet of land, and again, at 4905 Fossil Drive.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time. And Charles and Sandra Hardy, I believe you're here. Do you wish to address the council at this time, or just be available if they have questions? Members of the council, questions for Mr. Ms. Hardy? There being none, do we have members of the audience who wish to speak either for or against this request for a variance? There being none, the public hearing is closed, and I'm ready to receive a motion. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I approve variance 003-02.
Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
Have a motion, a second. Councilmember Williams?
You want me to ask, I need Plisca to say.
He told us in pre-council that there was 13 notices sent.
The people in the audience didn't know that, though, Mr. Hurley.
Okay, excuse me, go ahead, James.
Thank you. Yes, sir, we sent out 13 notices to property owners within 200 feet. Staff received five in favor and zero against.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hurley.
Any further discussion? There being none, register your votes, gentlemen. And that is, that does pass by unanimous vote. Item number 24, resolution, I believe, Mr. Alfred.
This is to conduct a public hearing concerning the 28th year for the Community Development Block Program grant that we have this year. Because Halton City is a community of less than Because Holton City is a community of less than, less than 50,000, we participate through Tarrant County for these projects each year. This particular project is to improve the 4,900-through-5,000 block of Joy Lee Street from Katrine to Mona. There is approximately $173,000 for engineering of paving, drainage, sidewalks, $28,000 for water sewer mains, for a total project cost of about $201,000.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time for comment input from the public regarding this 28-year program Community Development Block project. Anyone wishing to speak on this subject? There being none, I will close the public hearing, and Councilmember Jennings?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, move to approve R. 2002-006-06.
Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Councilmember Patino?
No, I was for a second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If you will, register your vote, and that is also a unanimous vote in favor of. Item number 25, Mr. Alfred.
Item number 25 is to consider an application of Michael Birchfield for the zoning change request from the single-family II residential district to the planned development C2, planned development commercial district with site plan approved on tracks 2B and 2C, one Mortimer-Elliston survey A473, containing approximately 1.5 acres of land located on the northwest corner of Denton Highway and Webster Street, locally known as 3501 Denton Highway. The council considered this item at its last meeting, and there was some discussion about changing this to a planned development ordinance, and basically, that's it. Mr. Plisca has worked with the developer on that and may have some comments on this particular item.
Yes, Mayor, and councilmembers, as of the tabling of this item at the last meeting, staff met with the legal counsel on this and determined that we could essentially, if you'll look on my most recent report dated on the 28th, which is about eight pages back in your packet, more or less, we took P&amp;Z's action, in which P&amp;Z passed this item from just a straight C2 use to narrow this to some specific permitted uses for a PD C2, and then to adopt this with the existing site plan that you have in your packet this evening. The ordinance will address the two specific uses that will be allowed here, will be office, building sales, and materials. The site plan that you have is an original survey of the property. This site plan, in conjunction with that ordinance, will secure the area, the rear area of the property, of which there is concern of possible extra building taking place. With the adoption of this PD C2 and with the site plan, the owner of the property would have to come back before P&amp;Z and council to amend that particular site plan if any future construction were to take place.
Questions from the council for Mr. Plisca on the issues he has addressed. Councilmember Williams?
On this site plan, if we approve this, it needs the same process. We go out that the people would get notices within 200 foot of this property?
Yes, that is correct.
Would be notified.
It would be treated like a rezoning application.
Same as this project started as.
That is correct. A 200-foot notice would take place, a public hearing would take place at planning and zoning, and a public hearing would take place at council.
Structurally, everything will be just like it is and can't change unless they come back before a rezoning.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything further for Mr. Plisca? Okay, I will open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Birchfield, I believe you're here. Anything you'd like to say to the council? Just be available for questions if...
Available for questions.
Okay, members of the council, do you have questions or comments for Mr. Birchfield? There being none, do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this? And we do have one appearance before the council card that's been filled out, and that is from Mr. Morris McCormick. Mr. McCormick, you're welcome to come forward at this time if you'd like to address the council on this issue. And if you would give us your name again and your address for the record.
I'm Morris McCormick. I live at 3505 Revere. I've been there for some 40 years. First, the purpose of this was to change it to an office. That was the purpose right here, and I still don't understand why we tax C2 this, even if it is a PD. I'm opposed to C2 strictly. That's here and there, but I'm opposed to that. I won't go on record for that. Use limits, it says that the vacant portion of the property will not have any additional warehouses on it without amending the submitted site plan. I'd like to know what it takes to amend it, in case, you know, that it wanted to be amended. I would like to know that.
Okay, if I could, did you have any other things you wanted to mention to the council at this point?
Not well...
Before we get Mr. Plisca to answer your question?
I want to say that Mr. Birchfield was upset at the residence real bad for going our route, that we asked, you know, not to go C2. We was trying to maintain residential area there. That property was residential, and it was always meant for residential, but I don't know why he's, I understand, he says that he's upset because we didn't trust him.
Okay.
I'd like to put the trust on paper, really, you know.
Okay, so you're opposed to the C2, and you'd like a question, your question, actually?
Well, I don't understand why we didn't go O. He says here that he's, the applicant is requesting zoning change in order to open an office for his remodeling business, and that's office, period. And I don't understand why we went C2 even, you know.
Okay, if you have no further comments, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Plisca to address all of those issues that you've just raised.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, thank you for your presentation.
We didn't, we didn't get no letters on this last, at all.
Okay, he'll address that also. Councilmember Everett, did you have something you wanted to input at this point, or shall Mr. Plisca answer these questions?
Oh, you can go right ahead.
Okay.
Can we have Mr. McCormick stay up here close?
Sure, Mr. McCormick, would you stay up close so if we have, just go ahead and be seated on the front seat. If we have further questions, we'll... Yes, Mr. Plisca?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. On November 30th, staff sent out 28 property notices concerning the original application to rezonage to C2, and we normally do, it is normal procedure, just to send out the notices at the planning and zoning portion of the public hearing of a rezoning process. We do not re-initiate the 200-foot notification. Of those 28 property owners, staff received one in opposition and zero in favor, okay? So there was just one in opposition during that time period. In terms of future land use, the city decided in 1995 on the original land use plan that that property was to go commercial. In fact, in my report, two-thirds of the property are shown in the plan to be commercial. In the planning theory also, in a corner where you have a collector intersecting a major arterial like Denton Highway 377, it is expected for that full corner to become commercial. Therefore, the plan can be changed to note that this will be, always be, commercial in terms of the plan being passed in 1995, showing that two-thirds frontage of the property with possible third of that, since you have an intersection of an arterial and a collector there, which is what Webster is. We're all familiar with that intersection. It is a controlled intersection. So therefore, being a commercial designation as of the '95 plan, the applicant should or could be able to go office all the way to C4. The plan would have allowed for that. But instead, given the nature of what the applicant applied for and has always applied for in the process, was to have an office and a facility where customers were to come by and view the merchandise that he has installed on the property, therefore indicating a need for a lower zoning usage of C2 for this use.
Okay, members of the council, you've heard the explanation by Mr. Plisca. Councilmember Jennings?
One question for staff. Mr. Plisca, you were speaking of the depth of this lot being abnormally deep, and that on the comprehensive land use plan, two-thirds of that particular lot was allocated on the CLUP as to go to commercial.
Correct.
The reason that they are not seeking to zone the back portion of this lot, something else would be that they would have split zoning?
That is correct.
They would have to actually replat a portion of that property in order to, to not tie the back end of the property to the front end of the property, wouldn't they?
That is a good point, and a very good point of clarification. If we were to split zone that property, it would go against the zoning ordinance, but also against the fact of, that would be too narrow of a use as well to be properly used, that remaining portion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you. Mr. Plisca, on this particular application, what keeps him from going C1?
What keeps him from going C1? The fact that...
You do a C1 and a PD.
The fact that he is actually doing building material sales. Our ordinance at this time will not permit that in a C1. It takes a C2 for building material sales.
So in other words, the only difference is, is he applied for an office, and that, an office, I guess, would be like in a corporate office, if someone is just...
No, it's my effect in his application, he never applied for an office.
No, I'm talking about that, that's what would be covered in is an O.
Yes, sir.
Is just for an office.
Right, and C1 has very limited applications. If you note on the, in the zoning ordinance, it probably has less than six or eight uses in the C1 district.
The reason they're using this, and I don't know, is, I guess, they're displaying these products that they're going to sell.
Yes.
Is all the improvements they've done to this piece of property.
That's my understanding.
So really, they're not going to be warehousing any products or anything, it's just...
I don't see the need for warehousing, with the exception of possibly, let's say, I sell you four windows, and for some reason, you don't take those windows, and then therefore I've got four windows. Well, I may have the need to store those four windows at a point to where I can resell them again, or at some time down the line, maybe an interested party is interested in those four windows, then, then he has the ability to store and transact with those windows.
So Mr. Birchfield's not going to be inventorying products here. It could only be on an occasion like that, if something was ordered and it was the wrong thing, or someone canceled the order.
That is, that is the indicated use exhibited to me, however, you know, they may have a different use for it.
And Mr. McCormick said that he was sending notices on this?
We sent out notices on, as I said, for...
The 28th.
Right.
Oh, okay. That's what you...
Of November, and that would have been in 2002, or 2001, excuse me. We do not, as a policy, resend the notices for, if the item is tabled. We do not send the notices for council. We send the notices for the public hearing process, which is initiated at P&amp;Z. Also in the letter is addressed to the notice that P&amp;Z does not have the authority to change the zoning. Only city council has the authority to change the zoning. That is why the notice has covered the two public hearings.
Okay, and this is for Wayne. Mr. McCormick says that his notice was dated, I think, sometime in December for 2002, and with it being that close to the end of the year, I can see how someone would make that mistake. Is that still, it's still a binding deal, isn't it, by being 2002, or?
Councilmember Williams, the issue is whether or not the notice would have been confusing to a normal person, and it was a mistake, and we try to avoid those mistakes, but I think due to the fact that it was at the end of the year, that it probably could have been determined that the notice was sent out for a particular meeting, and if Mr. McCormick was confused and didn't attend the hearing, because of that, we might want to reconsider reviewing this issue. But from everything that I've been told, I think the people that got the notice have spoken, and I think we're pretty well familiar with the fact that some people are opposed to the zoning, and we can, the council can weigh that when it makes a decision tonight.
Excuse me, but I would like to make a point of clarification. Mr. McCormick did attend the meeting of the planning and zoning at that time.
Could I ask Mr. McCormick a question?
Yes. Mr. McCormick, would you come back to the lectern, please?
I know you were here at the last meeting, we discussed this, and I know your property is just to the west of this property on the west side of Revere Street.
Yes, sir.
And I think the people, I think you got some other people that came and spoke with I know there's a concern about the entire piece of property, and I know you were concerned about like if this gentleman took the property after he got it done and sold it to someone like McDonald's and did something with it. First of all, I want to tell you, if he does sell this property to someone else, they're going to have to go through the same process they're going through right now to change the use on this, so you'll be protected by that. If they want to come in and change it, it would be just like it is tonight. You would, you'd get, I would hope you'd get the notice saying 2002, far 2002.
Yes, sir.
But I think they weigh that James, and I appreciate Councilmember Jennings bringing this up at the last meeting and coming up with the idea of the PD. I think he's come up with a pretty good meet in the middle there, to where they can still operate their business, and where y'all can still have the privacy in your, in the back there. It's not going to be like it was, you know, 10 years ago. You've got to say it's a lot better now than it was.
I think I can speak for the residents right now. We're not against what Mr. Birchfield's doing, you know. I'm not totally opposed to what he's doing at all. We don't want no warehouses, that's for sure.
Right.
But, you know, we're trying to contain our property like it is and the residential area like it is, you know, and if anything happens, it's sold. Will, will it go back to just C2, you know, rather than PD?
It would go. You want to address that?
I might address that. Mr. McCormick, the property being rezoned tonight is to PD C2, and in order for any change to be made by anybody, whether it's Mr. Birchfield or any new owner, the person would have to come before the city council and request a zoning change. So basically, tonight, if the council approves this ordinance, the use of that property is limited to office showroom, and the site plan that the council's approving with this ordinance is what anybody else can do with the property. They can do nothing but what's shown on the site plan, unless a new application is filed with the city, at which time all the property owners within 200 feet would be given notice and would be told that there will be public hearings on that issue.
You are zoning Webster then as C2 also? Is that what you're telling me on this?
No.
You know, it's, that's what it says here for Denton Highway and Webster, and I just wondered, you know, if you're zoning Webster, you know, for C2 also?
Just the extension of that tract.
Sir?
Just the extension of his property.
Just the extension of the property.
The address will still be Denton Highway, though, right?
Yes.
Anything further, council? Mr. Williams?
In case that anything ever happens, will we get a letter stating, you know, that it is going to happen? You know, I didn't get a letter on this. The letter I got, the only letter I got was 2002, you know, in December, and I didn't think a whole lot about it. I got to thinking about it, and about a day before the zoning met, I went down and asked them about it, and they told me it'd be 2001, you know.
Anything further, Mr. McCormick, that we can address tonight?
Not that I know of.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wish to, to address this issue? If you will, Brett, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Brett Ford. I live at 3420 Meadow Oaks. I've never, I've never received any letter whatsoever on what's going on, period. I know my back property backs up to the lot on the corner of, the opposite corner of where he's from, and in the years past, I know I've received letters on things that's tried to go on at that property, and I have, I don't know nothing about this until I came up here. And I know the lady next door did not receive one.
Sir, do you live without, you live outside of the 200?
Where is this?
Just, Mayor?
No, I don't. I live right here. I live right here.
If your name is on the tax rolls, you should have gotten it.
Then she didn't receive one either.
Well, this has been sent. All of these that you see marked here have been sent.
How come I've received them in the past? Because I know I'm not 200 foot from this line to this line. That property line's not 200.
If you fall within here, then you were notified, all of these have been sent.
I'm measured, I'm, I, that's okay. But I know the lady next door didn't receive it, because she would have said something to me about it.
Here's all-
Sandy Sellers did not receive it.
There you go, Brett, you can have that.
Where's your names?
Red here, your map, too.
I didn't receive nothing. And I've received it in the past when they tried to put a used car lot on there a few years ago. That I do know. So you don't even show anything. On Meadow Oaks at all. 3424 Sandy Sellers. She didn't receive nothing.
That's her name, I think.
Yeah.
Isn't that her address?
Yeah.
Then I guess we take that over to the postal.
Mr. Pulisca, is the address, Mr. Ford's address within 200 feet of this property?
We'll get the technology up and find out.
If that's what he says, according to our maps, if he lives right there, yes. And that was sent.
I didn't receive anything.
Which one's he?
And I know if the lady next door, she would have received something, she would have asked me about it. That I do know. I'm not opposed to what he has done. The only thing I have to say is, the only thing I'd be afraid of, the windows as he spoke of, well, they hadn't sold them, they hadn't sold them, they stack them outside and forget about them, and here goes something else, they have to stack outside. Is that going to be allowed on the C2? Or are they going to be required to keep it in the buildings that they have existing at this time?
Mr. Pulisca, can you answer the question Mr. Ford just asked?
I'm sorry, what, what did he?
Outside storage.
Sorry, I didn't hear the question, I was looking at the list.
Outside storage.
There's no outside storage allowed to C2. Any type of storage would have to be inside a facility.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is I've seen places in the past say, well, let's just, we're just sticking them out there for right now, and that's where they stay. I'm not saying so much in the windows, I'm not going to say they're doing that. But there's, you know, pieces of lumber, well, we can use those, stick them out there and get to them later, and there they stay, and that's nothing but, being that everybody on my side of the, Webster has an acre of land or plus, we do have rat and rodents, raccoons, opossums, and everything else running around through there, just creating another home for the rodents, is the way, the way I'm looking at it.
Okay. Anyone have a question or comment for Mr. Ford? Councilmember Jennings?
Question for staff. James, the letters of notification, how are those mailed?
Those are mailed, the United States mailed.
Is there any reason that we don't send those return receipt requests?
No, because what we do, we use them, we use the current TAD listing, the Tarrant Appraisal District listing for the owner of the property, and that would be based on the 2001 tax rule.
So if you have absentee landowner and they live in California, they'd get a letter?
They would get a letter.
Okay, good. But the, the point of concern I have here is if we have residents, people that own their property here, and we're sending these letters out and they're not getting them, I understand that that's a postal problem, but still the burden of notification is on us. And the difference between sending a letter out for 34 cents and sending it out for a dollar and a nickel, I would feel much more comfortable if we directed staff in the future to mail these out, return receipt requests.
Anything further?
That's all.
Councilmember Williams, and Councilmember Avery, you had your light on a while ago.
My question's already been answered, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Mr. Ford, I wanted to address something you brought up with the outdoor storage. And I think Mr. Pulisca will probably echo this, and that will be a zoning or an ordinance with code. And if they do go in there and if they stack stuff outside, then you simply pick the phone up and call.
Councilmember Williams, may I interrupt just a moment? I think people in the back are not hearing what you have to say. Do you mind?
Well, if they can't hear me, that's a new one. Sorry out there, can you hear that? We were having a little secret meeting up here. If you have a problem with the, with the outdoor storage or a code violation, that then, all you have to do is simply pick up the phone and call code up here, and they will address it, and I assure you they'll take care of it. And if they don't do it, then you let us know about it. Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak either for or against the request by Mr. Birchfield on this PDC2 plan development? Okay, there being none, I close the public hearing, and gentlemen, we're ready to move to the corresponding motion. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 202002-001-15.
Councilmember Patino?
Just for a second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion. There being none, if you will, register your vote. And that passes by unanimous vote, and ladies and gentlemen, with your consent, with your permission, we're going to take about a seven-minute recess. We will reconvene at nine o'clock sharp. Ladies and gentlemen, it's three minutes after nine. We reconvened in open session. We come now to the next public hearing, item number 26. Mr. Elfrinck, will you introduce that for us, please?
Mr. Mayor, item number 26 is a request for zoning change from Rebehia Aldias from C3 Commercial District to the C5 Commercial District to open an auto sales facility on tracks 2A and 2A1 West North Survey, A-1166, containing approximately one acre of land located on the north side of East Belknap Street, locally known as 5821 East Belknap. This item was considered by the council at the last meeting. There were some questions and some concerns from council that unfortunately we couldn't answer at that time because Mr. Pulisca was not at that meeting. He is here tonight. And we have also researched this item a little bit more in the direction that council gave us at the last meeting and believe that we can resolve those issues at tonight's meeting.
Okay, Mr. Pulisca, what information do you have to update us on this?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Aldias has asked to, for a zoning change request from C3 to C5 Commercial District to open an auto sales facility on the tracks that he's indicated here on his site plan, if we could look at that, which would be Exhibit A in your packet. His particular lot is on 5821 East Belknap Street, and it also is considered what they call a through lot, which is on East Beulie Street. And if you'll notice, he's indicating that the area of sales that he has for this C5, it would be that building that you see on the left middle portion of the site plan that's indicated with the five parking spaces there. Directly behind that is a metal building, which is being used at this time for an auto repair facility. Now, again, I think some of the concerns were, the applicant was not aware that the auto paint and body facility would have to cease operating if he does achieve the C5 zoning. C5 zoning, again, is a standalone district, and we only allow the permitted use of an auto sales facility on a particular piece of property that has that zoning distinction. Now, the fact that this is auto paint and body shop, he cannot continue to operate that. He would need to simply open up an auto sales facility. I explained to the applicant in meetings with him that his only solution would be to, if you look at, again, at this exhibit, would be to replat the property into two lots, then seek a zoning of C4 with a conditional use permit for the auto paint and body shop, and then of course a C5 for his auto sales facility if indeed he so, did so choose to do that. If you look carefully, he could feasibly do this by either splitting the lot, either diagonally, excuse me, horizontally across or vertically across. It could very well feasibly be done because he's got an existing concrete surface there, which you see is that T-shaped item over there on the east side or to the right on your site plan, which he intends to build a new facility. Now, if he does get this C5 rezoning, he will need to meet the district restrictions. Now, the district restrictions are very clear in that, A, he cannot work on automobiles. He cannot have an auto paint and body shop, rebuild those vehicles, and then sell them up front. That must be on a separate lot of record. B, the, the building that you see on the left is a temporary building. That is not on a permanent foundation, and therefore he would need to build a permanent structure before he would be issued a certificate of occupancy. Therefore, in addition, he would need to meet the new landscaping requirements and the new parking requirements for a C5 auto sales facility. If he chose, again, to subdivide the property and then do both, the metal building that is behind, which has the auto paint and body facility, would have to be on a separate lot of record. The auto sales facility would have to be on a separate lot of record.
Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Pulisca's perspective on this subject? Councilmember Williams?
You expand on the separate lot. Would he have to go under and subdivide the lot?
I'm sorry, sir?
The property in the back, if he wanted to have to use that, he would have to subdivide that property?
Yes, sir.
Have to make two different plans, I love it.
He would have to replat the property.
And that other property would have to face off Beulie then?
He could either, he could do it two ways, that's a good point. If he subdivided in a, in a horizontal fashion, he would have to make it such that the property for the auto paint and body would face on Beulie. Okay? Then he'd have the frontage there for his auto sales facility. He would have to address the fact then that if he did do that, he would need to come back enough to meet the rear setbacks for that district. That would be the only thing that might be preventing him from doing that. If he, if he subdivided vertically, of course, then both lots could have, would be through lots then with frontage on Beulie or frontage on East Belknap Street. With, of course, being a commercial designation, you would need to have that frontage on Belknap.
Is that metal building sitting on the easement or is it sitting on the property line?
It's sitting on the property line, and again, he would, that would make that a non, it's a very good point, that would make that a non-conforming building, and he would have to address that. In other words, he would have to either seek a variance from the zoning board of adjustments to grant that non-conformity or to seek a district that it could fit in, which, in which has zero building lines, and that would be an industrial district.
Well, this wall on the west side of this back building, does that have a two hour fire wall on it?
Probably not. That's a good point. You indeed would have to have that if it were a zero lot line situation.
Anything further, Councilmember Williams?
No, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pulisca. Mr. Aldias, would you like to address the council or just be available for questions that the council might have? If you would come, please, to, to the podium and give us your name and address.
Rebehia Aldias, I lived in Arlington, but right now I reside in San Diego, California, 423 National City Boulevard. Everything Mr. James said, he explained to me before, and I agree to comply as I did before. Council Williams, back in 98, he came to my property and recommended some of the grass be removed out of my property, which is to the street, and I did comply. Mr. James came several times and he recommended a fence, and I did that. He recommended to, for me to stop the sales until I get the rezoning, and I made everybody stop and he took all the cars. So as you see, it's my actions speak. I'm going to do whatever the rules and regulation, and I keep working with Mr. James and everything he said. That's all I want to say.
Okay, Mr. Aldias, before you leave the podium, you do understand what, what Mr. Pulisca said, the various conditions, and you agree to abide by those? Have no problem with this?
Definitely. What I need right now is a rezoning, as a car use, I mean a used car lot, and if I want to do the other business, I'm going to replat and I'm going to do everything because my property needs improvement, as I addressed to the council before, and it needs improvement before I did, I do anything in there. This is the reason for me I'm here, because as I stated before, I need, I need the capital, I need the money to, to that.
Okay, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Aldias, I've got a question for you. You had stated previously, when we visited this item last meeting, that you did body work privately for, for your own business.
I did that when, back in 98, yes.
Okay. And you, I just want you to understand that you cannot do that once we rezone this.
I don't understand.
Okay.
Councilmember Williams?
Okay, Mr. Aldias. This piece of property you have, that has the portable building out in the front, the temporary structure, you understand that's going to have to come down, is that right, Mr. Pulisca?
Yeah.
And a new structure will be built?
Yeah, I spoke to him before. I do have a piece of land where it has a-
Speaking to Markham?
Solid concrete already on it. This temporary office is going to have to be removed, and if I, I need to use the office, the building itself, it has inside office, this is what I'm going to be using, not the office outside, this is going to have to be removed.
Now, you asked me.
Yes, sir. He indicated, what he indicated, that he would use the building that's on the site as an office, and what he's indicated to me, this is indicated to me, that he would, he would eventually build a permanent structure on this concrete that is over on the east side.
And did I understand you to say that he had to build that structure to get the zoning?
Yes, he would, no, he, he, yes, he will need to meet the district restrictions once he's, once he's rezoned, yes. But he indicated that he would use the office that's currently the office for the auto paint body until he builds the other facility.
Okay, but there's not going to be an auto paint and body?
No.
He's just going to use the office. You're going to use that office for auto sales until you, and in what period of time does he have? I know, but what kind of? Three months, six months?
I couldn't issue a certificate of occupancy until all the restrictions are met.
Which is building the new building?
Well, if he landscaped, he used this as the old building, he could very well use that. It's a permanent structure.
As long as he doesn't replat.
Anything further, Councilmember Williams, to get your questions answered?
I'm not completely, the building that we're sitting in the corner here, is that, is that a temporary building? Is it ended up on blocks or something?
No, it's a temporary building, and that would have to go as part of his renovation project. What he's saying is he would use the, the metal building that you see on the site plan as his temporary office.
Does that have an office in it right now?
It has an office and bathroom, it's a big size office, and it has a big bathroom in the back, and, I mean, it's a work, it's ready and go. And I've been, I've been like three months already without work, you know, not doing any work, complying with the work. I don't want to be delayed more than that.
Right. And that is okay with the zoning to use that property, use that paint and body building as a sales facility, but you cannot use, you understand that you cannot use that paint and body shop?
Right, right. That is, that's correct.
And if you're, if you're caught doing it?
If I violate, which is, you know, as I said, my action, if I say something, I'm into it. I'm not going to violate.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but I want you to understand if you don't, you know, go with what they're saying here.
Definitely.
Their actions are strong, too.
Of course, of course. Yeah, I do understand.
I just want to make sure we understand each other tonight, we're three months down the road, you know, we say we didn't understand each other.
No doubt.
The body shop cannot be a body shop anymore.
No doubt.
Okay.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Aldias. Anyone in the audience, since we have a public hearing taking place, wish to speak either for or against the, the request by Mr. Aldias? There being none, I close the public hearing, and we move now to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve 02002-00715.
Have a motion, Councilmember Markham. Councilmember Avery?
I'm, for a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second before us, any discussion on the motion. There being none, if you will, register your vote, and it carries by unanimous, approved by unanimous vote. Item number 27 is our final hearing tonight. Mr. Elfrinck, would you like to introduce that, please?
Mr. Mayor, item number 27 is a public hearing to consider the application of Mr. Chuck Kendrick on behalf of the city of Halton City for a zoning change request from the SF2 Single Family Residential to the M1 Industrial District on Track 2B, 1B, J. Walker Survey, A1654, containing approximately 1.52 acres of land located on the southeast corner of Hollis Street and Higgins Lane, located in the 2100 block of Higgins Lane, and to amend the comprehensive land use map to reflect this change in zoning. This piece of property is adjacent to our existing public works facility. This change is necessary that we, so that we can proceed with the- so that we can proceed with the plans that we have to construct a new facility on this site, and I believe on this particular portion, which is an empty plot of land right now, will be located the new administration building and staff building for this center. Excuse me. And as this is being constructed in phases, this will help facilitate that construction.
Okay. You have heard Mr. Elfrink's explanation. Mr. Pulisca, anything you need to add to that?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Staff did submit a 200-foot notification on January 11th, 2002. Staff sent out 19 notices, and staff received zero in opposition and zero in favor. However, at the meeting, planning and zoning meeting, there was a gentleman that-- whose house does live adjacent to the project, and he was concerned of the nature of the project, and his assurances were addressed by the city engineer. And the man did agree to come tonight, but I don't see him in the audience tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Pulisca before I open the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Pulisca.
Thank you.
There being no questions for you, I will open the public hearing at this time for this request by Mr. Chuck Kendrick on behalf of the city of Halton City. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against this request? Okay, there being none, we close the public hearing, and gentlemen, I'm ready for motion on the ordinance that corresponded. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we pass ordinance number 0-2002-009-15.
Councilmember Hurley?
Just for a second.
I have a motion and a second on this agenda item. Any discussion? If you will, register your vote, and that passes by a unanimous vote. We move now, having completed the public hearings, we move now to the announcements and the events. Councilmember Henderson, I believe you have an announcement to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to announce again that we have the 16th Annual 5K Run and Walk and the 10K coming up here in the city of Halton Stampede. It's Saturday, February the night, 2002. You can early register, I believe, till-- Yeah, when is it?
Make up a date.
Yeah. I think you can early register to February the 2nd, and then after that, you can register on the day of the race. And that will be at the Burville Stadium, as always. We'll be giving-- we'll be giving the Buffaloes for the trophies, and it's always a good thing. So, we need to come out and be fit and run.
Anyone else on the council have an announcement to make at this time? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Williams?
I haven't decided yet if I'm gonna run in there or not. I gotta check with my agent. First of all, I'd like to thank Halton High School for having us out to their guys and dolls play they had this last weekend. They put on a very good play for us, and I want to take our hats off to them and thank us for-- thank them for having us out. And the other thing that I have tonight, first of all, I would like to ask anybody in the audience or anybody on this panel that either attended or taught at West Burville, stand up a moment. So, if you taught or attended West Burville Elementary Schools, stand up. It's quite a few. They're celebrating 50 years this year, 2002. And Mr. Lowtham had talked to me and asked for this, for the principal to ask him, to ask us to recognize them. And I think the city secretary could probably get them some sort of proclamation, and possibly the mayor could give it to them. But I just want to thank West Burville for 50 years of service.
John?
We will put that on the agenda for the next--
Did I leave out something, Mr. Lowtham?
I found out tonight that they were under the impression that West Burville was the first elementary campus in Burville District to open. Thank you, Mr. Lowtham.
Any further announcements or events? If you will, if you will--
Oh, it's not enough. I was gonna tell you. At West Burville, they did have at least five people. It was there the first year that West Burville opened, had at least five alumni come back to West Burville.
Okay. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention that Councilmember Jennings and I were not one of the first students.
But I was close. Do you win eight years?
I'm about to lose control of this meeting, so I'll pull it back into focus. Any further announcements that need to be made? Okay. I want to mention something for the benefit of the audience. Over the last couple of three meetings, I have been pretty lax with regard to our policy on the yellow cards. The yellow card stayed, and this was used by the previous mayor and councils before, and it simply said, "If you wish to address the city council, a speaker's card must be filled out and given to the city secretary prior to the start of the meeting." The last couple of meetings and tonight, we've had them filter in as time has gone on, but beginning with our next meeting, that will be enforced. So, we want our citizens to speak, and we encourage you to do that, but in order to give us a sense of continuity and order, I really do need for you to fill those out ahead of time. So, if you will, just be advised that beginning with our next meeting, for you to address the council, your speaker's card needs to be filled out and given to the city secretary prior to the time I wrap the opening gavel. Having said that, we have taken care of item number 28 on the agenda. We move now to item number 29. Mr. Elfrink, tell us about item 29.
Mr. Mayor, item number 29 is for the council to consider a change order on the Big Fossil Creek Channel Improvements Project. We have a contractor who has been working out there very diligently for the past several weeks. This project is something that has consumed a lot of staff time for the past eight months, getting the engineering and design work done, going out for bids on this in an emergency manner, having the geotechnical work done. Unfortunately, we have run into some problems on this project. It looks as though it's gonna cost considerably more than we had anticipated, and we are trying our best to contain costs, to maintain control in this situation. But yet, we have to repair the creek bank in accordance with Corps of Engineers specifications, and we just cannot cut corners on a project like this. We've had a last-minute negotiation and some reestimating done with the contractor that the city engineer conducted this afternoon. He's a bit more familiar with these figures, and I'll let him discuss those if he would, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As I had passed out the proposed change orders in pre-council, a couple of things that I wanted to address that I didn't get to finish in pre-council was, you know, this problem is twofold. The problem is not just with the erosion that's coming from the water inside the creek, but the groundwater that's coming underneath the subdivision. Consequently, this isn't an easy problem to solve. The erosion problem on itself is an easy problem. You can lay something along the bank that will keep the bank in its same condition, but that doesn't solve the water that we're getting underneath the bank, through the bank. We have to have something structurally sound in the channel. As I indicated in pre-council, we thought that the soil that existed in the bank, all indications were that that soil could be reused. However, now that we've gotten in the project, we found out that it couldn't. So, that's the need for the change orders that you have in front of you tonight. A couple of thoughts occurred to me regarding this change order. One, because of the dollar amount, somebody had asked, you know, do we need to go out and rebid the project? I briefly talked over this matter with our city attorney, and because this project was bid as an emergency project, we don't have to go out. We can negotiate what we feel is the best for a change order, and then, upon council's approval, you know, amend the contract accordingly. The next question is, what's a fair amount for this change order? And, you know, the dollar amount we're talking is $220,000. Perhaps the best thing to do is have not just myself, but our city manager, being that he's also the finance director, perhaps have him and I sit down with the contractor. And my way of thinking is, then you don't just have my head, you have two heads on behalf of the city, you know, determining whether this is a fair and equitable amount or not. And stating that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Members of the council, any questions? Councilmember Jennings?
If we send this out for rebid, how long does it delay the project?
There's going to be a couple of problems. One, we'd have to end the contract that we have right now with the contractor. But I'm assuming that if we went out for rebid again, we'd do it on an emergency basis. It would probably take two to three weeks to get a bid, have council award the project. I don't know that we're saving any time. The reason why you didn't see the contractor work today is he's waiting on the outcome of this. And we're still gonna have the same problem with the sandy gravel material that we have inside the bank still needs to be removed, and we need to put something back in its place, something that has some cohesiveness. So, I guess what it-- we would still have these items. It's whether these prices on these items, whether we feel comfortable with them or not.
A follow-up question to that. Let us say that the council determines to stick with the contractor that we have employed at this time. We do not go out for rebid. Would there be some way that we could authorize some amount of dollars that we could get him working again as soon as possible? So, you know, will the council authorize $50,000 for you to move soil while we're in the process of renegotiating this contract? Is that-- would that be something that we could work into the negotiation?
And that might be perhaps what we need to authorize, is the removal--
It's gotta come out of there either way.
The problem with that is, the solution that we're considering right now is gabions along the bottom. And if we can use those gabions, we want to design them such that maybe we don't have to remove out as much soil as we think we have. This is what we perceive right now as a worst-case scenario.
What I'm getting at is, rather than have the whole project come to a dead stop, could we not authorize some type of contingency fund that the contractor could draw out of, keep his people working, keep-- actually keep the thing going while we sit down and hammer out the hard parts of the contract?
Is that a question the city manager might want to answer, rather than the city engineer?
The matter of having $50,000 or $75,000 to enable this contractor to continue work during the rebid process, I don't think really is so much the issue. This contractor has been working very diligently on the weekends. His people are there before sunrise each morning. Greg and I have been amazed at how hard this individual and his crews have been out there working Saturdays and Sundays. I think that the problem is, the speed of his work is such that he would move beyond $50,000 or $75,000 in short order before we could even be halfway through the renegotiation process.
So, basically, what you're saying is, like it or not, we're gonna shut this down till we get this ironed out?
If that's the council's direction, to shut it down. Then you are taking a risk with the weather. Possibly, heavy rains could destroy some of the work that's been done thus far. I don't know what our exposure is on that.
And that's why my suggestion is, along your lines, let this be a worst-case scenario. And before the city enters into a change order agreement with this contractor, have Mr. Elfrink and myself sit down with this contractor and try to negotiate the best price. Because I think that's what you're after, isn't it, for each of these line items? And then, once the city manager is confident, yes, this is indeed a good price.
Fair enough.
Right. And that's-- so, I understand what you're saying, but perhaps that accomplishes the same thing.
That answers my question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Hurley?
Greg, on this thing here, by approving the change order, will this keep this contractor busy up there?
Yes.
Without any slowdown?
Correct.
Okay. And what's the total change order price we're talking about?
Right now, it's somewhere around $220,000. I think Pat had the exact amount.
Yeah, it's $220,542.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Williams?
Mr. Van Newen Hughes in Newtown, pre-council, that possibly you could shave some off that while working with him?
Right, and that's what I was getting at with Councilmember Jennings. I see this as a worst case, and I think we can negotiate some items down. I think there's an opportunity for a couple of the items for maybe-- for even us to do in-house, so that maybe those items go away altogether. And however, I don't want to mislead you and think that, you know, Pat and I'll be successful getting this down $40,000 or $50,000. You know, I think you're looking more closer in the neighborhood of $5,000, $10,000, maybe $15,000.
Now, when you say in-house, is this not gonna affect our street program?
No. I've already discussed this with the Director of Public Works, and he understands the need and the need to act in an expeditious manner.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, just for a moment, I'd like to address the in-house issue. I've talked with our public works director and with Mr. Van Newen Hughes a little bit. The types of equipment that are being used in this project bear little similarity to much of the equipment that we use. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the dump trucks that they're using are considerably larger capacity than what we have.
The ones that they have on site, they're earth-moving equipment. I think you've seen them. They're sitting up there now. The dump trucks that he's using to haul the material off-site are similar to ours. However, he's already, for instance, taken away, I think it's 797 loads of dirt. With our four dump trucks, we could have four guys doing that starting today, and they'd still be doing it this time next year.
What I want to-- I don't want to place a lot of hope on in-house assistance for this particular project. We don't have the equipment to do it.
Councilmember Hurley?
If I might ask the city manager, I thought that was the reason why this thing was changed over, to bid the contract out to a private contractor, because we didn't have the ability with our in-house personnel.
That's correct.
This would suit our street projects.
That is absolutely correct.
Now, we can do it.
No, I was saying, we cannot do it. I was just re-emphasizing that we cannot do it.
I thought you changed it, said before we could.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at an item such as the sidewalk removal. That's a $4,000 or $5,000 item, and that's something that we might be able to do in-house.
And the replacement of the sidewalk.
Right. Some items like that. I'm not talking on the order of moving 6,000 cubic yards of, you know, dirt.
Any further questions, comments by the council? We do have a very urgent issue involved. They're just north of Halton High School, and the property owners own the northern bank of that, and we've got a problem. And it's very complex. And I want to ask, before we do take a motion from the council to address this, for a recommendation from the city manager. In your opinion, Mr. City Manager, what is the best-case scenario that you would recommend to this council that, as far as action that we might take tonight to keep this project moving forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be glad to do that. I've had considerable conversations with Mr. Van Newen Hughes on this and Mr. Kendrick, and I've visited the site several times. I have been very impressed by the diligence, the tenacity of this particular contractor. I think in the past, I've heard many more concerns expressed by this council about contractors that are too slow. Case in point, one of our major facilities, we've had a grand opening, but yet we haven't occupied that building. Even though there certainly is a price to pay for it, we have a contractor, I think, that is fully motivated to go after this project and get it done. They have demonstrated that over the past four weeks or so. I believe it would be in the best interest of the city to continue on ahead, not have a stoppage of work, possibly have an extensive amount of damage to the unprotected bank if we had a severe bout of weather. But I think we need to perhaps bite the bullet here and move ahead on this project.
You've heard the recommendation of the city manager. I'm ready now to entertain a motion with regard to item number 29. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the change order, using the dollar figures submitted by the city engineer as worst-case scenario figures. Approve an amount up to and including that amount, and anything other-- anything higher than that would need to come back before this body. Give him the ability to negotiate with the contractor in any effort to save us any money as possible.
Okay. You've heard the motion by Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion before us? There being none, if you'll register your vote, and that passes, Mr. City Manager, by-- Any discussion on the motion before us? There being none, if you'll register your vote. And that passes, Mr. City Manager, by unanimous vote of the council. Item number 30 is to award a bid contract for the fire department.
In the last budget, the council approved the purchase of two thermal imaging cameras. These are devices that literally allow our firefighters to see through solid burning walls, whether they be masonry or, or wood construction. Bids were prepared recently in accordance with our purchasing policies, and we have a low bid from ADH Marketing of 29, excuse me, I say it's a low bid, but actually, it's the best bid of 29,000 per unit.
Any questions from the council of Mr. Elfrinck? Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this point with regard to this item. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. We made the bid of 29,000, that's 2,000, to ADH Marketing for the fire department.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson?
That is for a second.
Uh, councilmember Williams?
I'd like to clarify something that Mr. Elfrinck said. He said that was, he almost said that was a low bid, and he said it was the best bid. But we had another bid that came in that had 13 exceptions to the bids. It wasn't near as superior as what we wanted, and that's the reason we went with the bid that was a little higher.
Okay. Clarification, well noted. Any discussion on the motion before the council? If you will, there being no discussion, if you'll register your vote. And we are unanimous once again. Item number 31 has to do with mayor's hotline calls. And councilmember Williams, I believe you're the one that placed this item on the agenda. If you will, introduce that at this time. And then I have one speaker's card of someone who wishes to appear before the council to address this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor's hotline has become a subject in recent days or weeks that we've, we've been looking at. And I'm sitting here and looking at a copy of one dated January the 3rd. When I first came on board three and a half years ago, this process was a very good tool that we were using in the city. And at that time, it wasn't being abused. And I think at that time, it served its purpose. I'd like to have the council re-look at this, possibly even changing it from the mayor's hotline call. Dictionary says hotline, says where you get immediate response. And I would think that'd be like 911, where you call, and you pick up the phone, you get someone, they send someone out right away. I would like to maybe suggest something along the lines of an action line. Maybe it's actually for the citizens, so possibly a citizens' action line. And maybe kind of clarify what we're going to put in these. We've had stuff where people call the mayor's hotline and say, there's a chug hole on Owen Street, 3,000 block, or something like that. And then again, where my neighbor's dog barks all night and keeps me awake. And different things like that. And then we get some that are just derogatory towards city employees, or city council members, or other citizens. And I'd like to have the council discuss this, possibly come up with something better on this that we could use. I don't want to take away from the mayor's hotline. I want that tool to still be there and still be used. But some of these items in here, they could just as well call the switchboard up here and get ahold of whatever department they needed and get it handled right away, as opposed to when this comes in on the hotline. And I don't know exactly, Helen can tell us, if they pull these up daily, or they pull them up every day. And then they, the way they do them now, I've got a format here, and I doubt that David can zoom in on that. But they give the hotline, they give the nature of the call, the date. And what the secretary does is, she emails it to the department that he goes to, then he gives who called in the complaint, their name and address, or phone number, whatever they give. And then he gives the resolution over and says, whatever the city departments do to take care of that. And I'd like to open up the council and get their thoughts on that. And maybe see if there's something, some way we can, can maybe make this a better tool for us and do away with some of the nonsense on it.
Okay. We, before the council addresses the issue that councilmember Williams raised on this, we do have one speaker's card, Bob Watkins. I believe you want to speak on this subject. If you'll come forward at this time, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Bob Watkins, 6140 Blue Spruce Circle, Halton City. I found that messages are not passed along on a daily basis. A hotline, by definition, should be dealt with in a timely manner to be worth anything, or an action line also. I personally left messages that were not relayed fully, so that my full statement was not presented to the intended person or persons. I will not use language that requires centering, and therefore do not believe that a city employee has the need or right to center me. Along this same line, I have personally known people that have had messages that were not relayed at all. Again, the language was not such as to need centering and should not have been centered, much less deleted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Now, we are ready for council discussion on this. First of all, do members of the council have any questions or comments regarding the request by councilmember Williams on the mayor's hotline? Okay, there, there being no questions or comments, I'm in line for a motion regarding item 31. Councilmember Hurley?
I'm a little bit slower, but I want to make a comment on your last remark. I think, I agree with John. I think that these mayor's hotline comments should be a little bit more than what we've seen lately. It looks like they're, they're briefed down to almost nothing. And that's not really the correct way to put it. But we don't know. And we're, we're getting very little information on the feedback from the mayor's hotline calls. I know it takes personnel to do it, and I know it takes time for the people to sit there and record all of this and type it up. I still feel like it's a good means of communicating with the public to get the messages across to the council. So, I'm in favor of expanding this whole thing, the way John was talking about.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My major concern with the hotline and the way that it stands, I, I think I would like to look into changing the name and let the citizens know that this is an action-type situation rather than a hotline. It's just, it's just different words, but it, it does convey a different message. One of my major problems with it is, is I feel like that we are getting a synopsis of what an individual wishes to say rather than that individual's words. If we're going to take the words and pass them along to council, I think they need to be the citizens' words as they were stated, unless they're profane, and then I don't think that they should be, I think we can delete those. Some of our presidents have been known to delete those expletives. We have been getting a lot of input from Mr. Moose on the mayor's hotline. That's Mr. Anonymous. That's the gentleman that, or lady, that doesn't think enough about their comments to tell you who they are. If your comments need to be anonymous, it would seem to me that the content of them would not weigh very heavily on one's heart if they don't care enough about it to leave their name. So, my only suggestion would be, if, if we're going to take the comments, they need to be, they need to be spoken for, and the person that puts them on the hotline needs to give us their name. If we feel like comments need to be given anonymously, then I urge you to call one of the council members and the mayor, and give those comments to that person, and let them pass them along as they will.
I think we all agree, looking over the mayor's hotline, that here recently, it's become a political forum, and it was never intended to be that. And gentlemen, however you'd like to proceed from here, with, with regard to that, perhaps staff has heard our concerns, and if you deem it appropriate, it might be good to let them take this back and bring back at the next council meeting some thoughts and ideas or a recommendation regarding how the mayor's hotline might, might be better utilized to accomplish the purpose it was originally intended. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think probably, like Philip said about Mr. Moose, these are the ones that we see that came in. I'll leave these out here if anybody wants to look at them after a while. They're public record, I'm sure. These are the ones that come in, and the city secretary tells me that some of them, she gets in, they don't go to the trouble to type them in and put them down because of the nature of them. They're just, they'd be embarrassing to the people that they're in. And it just, you know, and I admire the city secretary for doing that. I don't blame her. I would hate to be in a position, I had to sit there and answer the phone and listen to that. We've got a lot more stuff to do in the city, and I know her job is much more demanding than Ms. Bernard that helps her than to sit there and just listen to, to nonsense. I would like to probably direct staff to go back and look at this. I think mayor's hotline is probably a good name for it. I think probably better something like citizens' action line, or something like that, because it's not actually, it's not the mayor's line, it's not my line, and it's not the city secretary's line. This line belongs to the citizens. And like the other day, we got one in that said that a truck was parked in a, on a piece of property in Halton City, said an 18-wheeler truck was parked in the front yard. Well, it was turned in on a Saturday. I got my hotline sheet, I don't have that one with me tonight, but it says, they sent it to code enforcement. Code enforcement went by, went by Monday, and went by Tuesday, and there was no truck. And I can see how that wouldn't be a hotline, because, you know, by the time these things are turned in, the problem's going to be abated. And then when it happens again, they're going to call the hotline, and then we're going to send people out there, and it's not going to be there. And then the people are thinking that this has no valid at all. You know, it needs, it needs to be something, when, when the citizens come in and address this, it needs to be something we can get on. I don't think that we need to drop everything we're doing to tell somebody that they didn't like the tie that I wore tonight. But on some of this important stuff, like chug holes, or maybe a light traffic light, we've had stuff like that, that a traffic light isn't operable. And I think Helen's going, Mrs. Harris is going to come in and say something. But I would like to see it, unless they just get real long-winded, I would like to see it in their entirety, instead of just caller doesn't like this, you know, something to elaborate a little bit more. Now, if that's all, if the caller just calls and says, hey, I don't like that, then that's, that's all we put on there. But I, I think we're sliding the citizen by not putting that in there. And you might limit, there might be some way you can limit the tape to when they call in, that, you know, I can hurry up and put it in, I won't get it all in there. And then, go ahead.
I don't think that we can do that, but Mayor Procham Williams, I would like to clarify that the city secretary's office, or none of our staff, have ever left a message off the mayor's hotline that we got that came in. There has been a few times where they came in, like on a weekend, and it only stays on the recorder so many days, and somehow or another, we lost it. But we have never refused to record one. We have not put down names of city employees when they were put on the mayor's hotline, because the city has liability in putting an employee's name on there. Neither has the city secretary's office, nor anybody in that office ever taken the initiative, or taken it on my responsibility to word the words the way I want them to be on that mayor's hotline. We record them as closely as possible, verbatim. We just do not put the entire message. If the council wants the entire message, the staff is more than willing to do that. However, I have only had a part-time person in that department up until January, and that even yet has not changed. And so, if the council wants it verbatim, word from word, I would suggest or recommend that you consider having another part-time person in that office to do nothing but the mayor's hotline, because it is very, very time-consuming.
Okay. This one that we've got, Ms. Harris, has got the 12 on it. Is that for one day, or is that, January the 3rd, it's got 12 on it?
Twelve calls.
Yeah, it would have been 12 calls. Sometimes they're real light, and sometimes they're heavy, and we can't judge.
Well, I don't do anything to disturb what y'all are doing and take away, you know, y'all have plenty of workload. But I'm just trying to streamline the system and let people know, you know, when you do call this action line, hotline, or whatever you want to call it, that you're not going to hang the phone up and look out the window, and you're not going to see somebody come out and fix the chug hole or move the truck immediately. There's a process that goes through, and-
From the time that I came to Halton City, the mayor's hotline was under the direction of the city manager, and it was the city manager's policy at that time that only the intent be recorded on the mayor's hotline. Before this was even put on the agenda this time, I did discuss it with the interim city manager, and it was his suggestion that we, if the council wants to set a policy for this, then that's your prerogative, then you should. But it should be the full council before we change policy internally. And I would not want to do that, take that responsibility on myself to change policy that's always been, without the full council making that decision. So, whatever the council wants to do is fine, and we would be glad to, to record it any way you want.
Okay. Is there a way that part of the, I don't understand. You want the full council?
Before we record it entirely, yes, word from word, verbatim, the way it is on the, comes in on the hotline, it's always been a policy that we just tried to put the intent of the caller, and as close to possible, the words that the caller put on there. That has been the policy, and that was my directions. And when we change that, then it should be the full council that makes that decision. And I don't have a problem doing that for you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Williams? I understand what Ms. Harris is saying, is she'd like for the council to take action on this and have a vote either to do this or not.
Oh, I'm not directing her to do that. I'm just, I'm directing staff to look into it, to see what we can do to make it better. I wasn't telling you to do that for me, if that's what you thought I was doing.
No, I know that.
Yeah. I just-
I just want the public to know.
I'm just trying to shine a tool that we got that worked real well when I got here, that's got rusty.
We don't condense them intentionally.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, I believe you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're on the subject, I know we're not discussing quite so much the handling of the calls, but rather how they're recorded and how they're passed on to the council. I would like, for the benefit of the people in the audience, both in person and on the television, just reiterate that it has always been, for the city department heads, excuse me, and the employees, to give hotline calls a very high level of priority. I want you to know that when the department heads receive these requests for action, for service, whatever it might be, it is considered to be one of the things that they're going to pay attention to that very day, and get a response back that day, or the very next day. Please take into account that we expect them to use good judgment, and not drop everything they're doing that particular day to see about a pothole. But they will, they have been given explicit instructions on several occasions to make every single effort possible to contact the individual who called in, to speak with them. If it was an email, perhaps to send them an email, make sure that we have contacted and spoken with that individual. And then we try and relay the resolution to the problem back to the city secretary just as quick as possible. Our, our goal is to work hard for the people who pay our paychecks and see to it that their concerns are paid attention to.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did, did the council not authorize the purchase of software by which that we will be able to take calls and route them to the proper?
We have that, and we have it installed. We, we have been using it. However, due- However, due to some technician problems, we have not been able to communicate with some of the other buildings like Public Works, Wrecks Center, and so, but it is being used.
Okay, so we're going to work the kinks out of that. That should lower the load on the action line or hotline or whatever you want to call it, if we're routing some of these to other departments?
In routing them, it will, but it will not shorten the time if we have to record them.
Okay. I think what we need to do here is we need to direct staff to look into the way that we are handling these calls, determine if there is a better way to do it, and report back to us at our next council meeting, and let us make a decision based on knowledge.
Is that in the form of a motion?
If you're ready for a motion.
I'm ready for a motion.
So be it.
We have a motion. Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Markham?
I'll...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Councilmember Jennings' motion? Councilmember Patino?
Councilman Jennings, being that we're going to get our new manager on the 18th of next month, would you be willing to kind of back up instead of the next meeting, maybe allow him to come aboard and have some input on this matter?
Yeah, I would certainly be willing to amend the motion to that, get some input from him, sure would.
That way he can have some, maybe he's got some new ideas?
Yeah, sure, be happy to amend the motion.
Okay, Councilmember Hurley, amend the second?
I'll second that.
Okay. You have heard the motion. Any further discussion? There being none, if you'll register your vote. And that is by unanimous vote once again. The next item on the agenda is item number 32, consideration and/or action regarding approval of rescinding the previous vote renaming the animal shelter. We will proceed in the same fashion we did previously. I'll have an opening statement since I'm the one that initiated this item being on the agenda to begin with, and then we'll hear from members of the audience who have filled out visitors' cards requesting to address the council on this subject. And once that is done, then I will call for a motion from the council, and we'll proceed from there. This item is a carryover item from the last council meeting on January 14th. This item was posted on that agenda, but when it came time for the council to take action, the council chose to sit in passive silence. I called for a motion three times and waited each time, giving the council adequate time to act. Council's inaction at that time left the matter as unfinished business and simply postponed addressing the subject until tonight. Now, let me take just a moment to put this issue in perspective. Framers of our city charter, with the approval of the voters, were very wise in defining a separation of powers among elected officials. According to section 3.10 of our charter, the mayor shall preside over the meetings of the city council. The charter does not prohibit the mayor from making or seconding motions, but it's been a longstanding practice in Halton City that he or she not do so, with which I wholeheartedly agree. The charter does say that the mayor may participate in the discussion, but may not vote except to break a tie. Now, the picture is very clear from what our charter says. The mayor's role in the decision-making process is primarily that of a facilitator of the mechanics of the meeting. The council has the votes to decide whatever the will of the council is regarding the issue before the council. The mayor is responsible for the process. The council is responsible for the product that comes out of that process. And as mayor, I have the right given to me by the charter, I have the responsibility to the citizens of Halton City to use the best judgment I have available to maintain the integrity of that process. And that's what is at issue here, folks. This is what is at issue. I have a personal preference about whether city facilities should be named after any former elected official, but the greater question to me is, in my role as mayor, is, was the process healthy that the council used to change the name of the animal shelter? In my judgment as mayor, it was not. Hence, my initiative in placing this item on the agenda for the council to consider rescinding the previous vote and go back through the process and do it right. Now, the item was posted on the December 10th issue, December 10th agenda, to consider naming a room in the animal shelter in honor of the former mayor. And that's not what the council did. They voted to name the entire shelter after the former mayor. Now, the question that arose in my mind was about the Texas Open Meetings Act. Did the way it was posted on the agenda allow the vote to be taken that was taken? Now, our city attorney said that nothing illegal had been done, but he did tell me, quote, "It could have been done better." When someone asked the district attorney's office about this, the district attorney's office replied, and I'm quoting, "It doesn't sound like a criminal issue, but it does sound like something the governing body will want to clarify. It is important, it is important to get things right. Some things just need to be revisited." And that's all I'm asking the council to do, to just rescind the previous vote, start the process over, go back, and do it right. As mayor, I have the responsibility to raise issues about procedure, since that's the area that, as facilitator of the meeting, as chairman of the meeting, that I focus on. The council has the responsibility to set in judgment over the issues I may raise about procedure and to determine if those issues have merit or not. And that's all I'm asking the council to do, to just tell me if the issues I have raised have merit. After we've heard from the citizens who filled out the speaker's cards who wish to address the council on the subject, then I'll ask for a motion and a vote from the council to express the will of the council in this matter, as they set in judgment over the merits of the issues regarding procedure that I've raised. And I'll be asking the council to act one way or the other, to put this issue to bed so we can move on with business. Our first speaker, who had given us a speaker's card, Allison Elliott Roach. Ms. Roach, if you would, come forward at this time and give us your name and address for the record.
It would be Allison Elliott Roach, 2912 Halton Road. All I have to say is there's 243 people on here that disagree with what you're asking them to do. We don't think that it's right. The vote's been made, it needs to be left alone. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. Bob Watkins, you filled out a speaker's card. Would you address the council at this time? And if you would, give us your name and address again for the record.
I'm still Bob Watkins, 6140 Blue Spruce Circle. For once, I find myself agreeing with the person currently occupying the mayor's chair. I too do not believe that anything should be named after a politico like him. By the way, I don't expect any building to be named after me either. That being said, I am honored to be married to a true public servant and extremely proud that our council deemed her worthy of naming our animal shelter after her. Over the almost 25 years that we have resided in Halton City, there have been public servants that I think would qualify for such an honor. But in the position of former mayor preceding Mayor Watkins, only two stand out, Johnny B. Lee and Trey Fowler. Moving along, I find that few missing, a few misinformed and/or uninformed persons have joined the small group of malcontents who, for years, have been against every effort to improve our city. The Star Telegram prominently displayed Halton City and Richland Hills in a January 13th article, explaining in detail the lack of progress made in these two cities until 1995. In case you were uninformed, 1995 was Ms. Watkins' first year on our council. As for un-slash-misinformed persons, one such recently stated that the shelter was a bond issue voted on by the public, which it wasn't. Councilmember Jennings made the motion naming the shelter, which he didn't, and that it was voted on by members of Ms. Watkins' council, and that the motion was made by Councilmember Henderson, who has never served on the council, with Ms. Watkins. This time last year, various ex-mayors and other deceitful persons used misrepresentations and outright lies pertaining to Mayor Pro Tem John Williams and me and anyone else standing close as hammers to discredit Mary Watkins. And now these same miscreants are shooting their first volley to intimidate our council, most particularly the four members who are up for reelection this May. Interesting enough, part of last year's negative rhetoric had to do with the perception that a minority insisted upon voting and revoting until the vote went their way. Putting this item on the agenda multiple times certainly indicates the actions of a control freak trying to get his way. This is small-town politics at its worst, with ex-politicos, a president politico, as well as politico wannabes trying to overturn a sitting council's vote. The proposition was placed on the agenda as consideration and/or action regarding approval of rescinding the previous vote in renaming the animal shelter, not to revisit or consider a new motion. This is a trick and does not allow the council any leeway. Regardless, a vote has been legally taken and recorded, and I, among other citizens, agree with the results, 7-0 in favor of the Nancy P. Watkins Animal Control and Adoption Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. And Ms. Roach, thank you for presenting the petition. I didn't tell you that a moment ago, but the city secretary has that petition, and thank you for bringing it forth. Our next speaker, Brett Ford. Brett, if you will, give us your name and your residential address for the record, please.
My name is Brett Ford. I live at 3420 Meadow Oaks. I've had the pleasure and honor of knowing Ms. Watkins for quite a few years, and she sure has helped a whole lot on some issues during with the city governments that I've had to talk to her about, being on the park board that I am, some things that's gone on that I disagreed with, talked to her about it. She helped me understand a couple of things that I didn't think was right. I've seen the city council in the past do some, rescinding on some votes that were previously approved on because the people here, more people are here, and it was easy for them just to rescind their vote. Several issues, one issue, it sticks in my mind, which none of y'all believed were on the council at the time, was on the land about the horses. I discussed this with Ms. Watkins years ago about it, and she thought it was done wrong then, and I believe what's going to happen, what's been brought up tonight is wrong. I heard, I heard the mayor say, the will of the council, I don't believe it's the will of the council, I believe it's the will of the people, to leave it as it is. Ms. Watkins worked hard to get what she, to get that there. If it wasn't for her hard work, I don't believe it'd be here. No one's cared in the past about what's happened to animals. We'll go on to the same procedures, what we've done. I believe now we've got an animal shelter. The city council here has gone a long ways in the last few years, and I'd like to see us to continue the growth. People in the city say, well, it's Halton City, they're still stuck in the 60s, maybe early 70s if we're lucky, with this animal shelter that's brought us up, with the park renovations that brought us up, and Ms. Watkins had a whole lot to do with all of that, a big part of that. And I don't believe a person has to be dead to have something named after them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Our final speaker who filled out visitor's card, Mr. Ron Sturgeon. Mr. Sturgeon, if you will, come forward, give us your name and a residential address for the record, please.
My name is Ron Sturgeon. My address is 3046 Monument Butte. At the last hearing, I spoke in favor of leaving the animal shelter named after Nancy Watkins and gave the merits for that decision. Several speakers, including our mayor, spoke on promoting unity in our leaders and the city, so I decided to also speak on that tonight. I agree that unity is very important, and we all hope that issues can be as non-divisive as possible, although there will always be contentious items. Each of our six councilpersons represents some portion of the city's voters and residents, and I have to believe that each of them hears from these constituents on all sorts of issues daily. I am one of seven managers in a limited partnership with 320 partners. When we meet and vote on issues, we generally try to be unanimous in our votes. At times, we must discuss and make compromises to get to unanimity. When one of us is opposed to something, following discussion and proposed compromises, we generally move ahead. We know that roughly 15% of the partners feel the same way as that manager, but we also have confidence that 85% of the partners, those represented by the other six managers, concur with the decision. We always work hard not to pass something with two members against, although it can happen, and we rarely approve anything that three of the managers don't agree with, as that means that close to 50% of the partners don't want it. This council is really no different, except that there are many thousands of partners. There will always be dissenters, but rarely can everyone be satisfied. In this instance, the motion to name the shelter passed unanimously. Our mayor, who does not vote, did not like the outcome, which is his prerogative. Unfortunately, we don't promote unity by placing things back on the agenda numerous times when they were previously approved by a unanimous vote of our elected officials. Although the mayor may at times disagree, his job is to promote unity, not divisiveness. Where would we be if every time any of our council or the mayor didn't like the outcome of some vote, they just kept putting the item back on the agenda, trying to get things to go their way? If there are to be exceptions, shouldn't they be when the council really does have a close vote, not when they pass something unanimously? We expect and require our elected officials to act professionally and don't have time for sandbox wars with private agendas. Let's get on with running the city and promote unity through leadership and respect for unanimous votes. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. We've now heard from those in the audience who wish to address this and filled out a speaker's card ahead of time, and we come now to the point of asking the council for a vote, and the choice is really very simple. What we have here is a difference of opinion between the mayor and the council, and there's nothing wrong with that. I don't march in lockstep with them, and they don't march in lockstep with me. In fact, sometime I see, the council doesn't even march in lockstep with each other, and that's okay. It's healthy for that, for that to happen. But my request that was placed on the agenda, really, there are two choices. If the council believes my issues about procedure have no merit, and that their previous vote was legal, right, and in the best interest of Halton City, they should vote to not rescind, but to uphold the previous vote. Or if the council believes my concern about procedure and the district attorney's office's recommendations have merit, and that we ought to get things right, the council can vote to rescind their previous vote and start the process over. Having said that, gentlemen of the council, what is your pleasure regarding item number 32 on our agenda tonight? Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I fully respect your feelings, Mr. Mayor, and the feelings of some of the citizens that object to this naming of this shelter after a past mayor. However, in our last meeting, we did visit with our city attorney, and at that time he advised that we were not in any, nothing illegal about it. Again, as far as I know, in our charter, we did not violate our charter by naming after a living mayor. So therefore, I will make a motion that we disapprove this of rescinding it, that we let it stand and uphold the unanimous vote of December the 10th of 2001.
Okay, we have a motion to uphold the previous vote. Do I have a second? Councilmember Williams?
I have a question for council.
I need a second before, if we could, on the motion before we have discussion.
I can wait.
Was that for a second?
No, I can wait.
Councilmember Patino?
Yes, I would like at this time to address the rest of my colleagues, and I know the way that you feel about it, you're sort of entitled to that feeling. However, out of respect for our citizens, I think we need to put this item to rest.
However, out of respect for our citizens, I think we need to put this item to rest, either yea or nay. By just remaining silent, I don't think that that's going to get us anywhere. He'll be back here on our next meeting, and we do have a lot of important things to take out.
Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I'll agree with what Councilmember Patino has said. Every council member up here is accessible, either via the city hall, email, telephone. If there were such a concern or an outpouring of disapproval from our citizenry, they could have contacted us. That hasn't happened. So therefore, I'll second Councilmember Patino's motion.
We have a motion and a second to uphold the previous vote. Councilmember Williams, I think you had a question or a comment a moment ago.
Well, first of all, I was gonna, then I got a statement I want to read into the record. This is for the attorney. We're voting to approve something that we voted to approve in December. Is that what the motion is? That's what I wanted to clarify.
I believe it is.
Is that legal?
It's legal to do that. It's not illegal. I might just comment, I mean, I've been brought into this, and I know that council has asked me, the mayor has asked me, whether or not it was legal for the council to take the vote it did in December, and it's my opinion that it was a legal vote. I think the agenda item that was posted was proper. There was compliance with the Open Meetings Act. I know an issue's been made of it, but I am quite aware of the feelings on both sides of this issue, and I have looked at it long and hard. And just to clarify, it's my opinion that the action taken by the council in December was proper. It did not violate the Open Meetings Act. I believe the effect of the motion that's before you right now is to reaffirm that vote that was taken in December. Whether or not you do that, the vote's going to stay the same. If you vote to approve the motion on the floor, it's going to have the same result as if you take no action on the matter before you. But I have no problem with the council voting again tonight on the matter to clarify the issue, as has been brought before the council tonight.
Before I read my statement, then, if we vote, and I admire Mr. Patino for doing this and taking the lead in this, he's a very honorable man, and I thank you for doing that, John, but we're in a no-win situation. If we vote to keep it the way it was, then, you know, we're showing power that we can do what we want to do, is what the message will send. If we vote to leave it like it was, it's already been approved. So either way, there's not really much point to make here. But I do have a couple of emails that I was sent on this. There was a Holton City Press came out. I don't know, I got about 20, 25 copies. It says Holton City Press. First of all, I want to tell the citizens of Holton City, we did not print or publish the city of Holton City. I do not, did they, Helen? We didn't print this, right?
No.
Okay.
I have no idea where that came from.
This came from my box.
I didn't put it there.
Okay, but that's where it came from. I'm not accusing you of putting it, that's where I got it. I've got this email that I got Saturday, it says, and I'm not going to read the citizen's name, but anybody wants to come ask me individually, I'll tell them who it is, and they're not politically involved. "In my mail day, we received a letter questioning naming the new animal control center for Nancy Watkins, Mayor Nancy Watkins. We were asked to contact a person to express our opinions. This is our opinion. This letter is not signed. We have no idea who sent it to us. Therefore, why should we give any credence to an anonymous letter, as they feel this strongly about the way they're right? Why not sign the letter?" And after I read that, and it kind of sent, I'm not going to read the press deal, but I'm going to make my answers to it. I just want to tell the citizens up there that I hold my hand in newspaper with the name of the Holton City Press. And I want to tell any citizen who received this letter, this in no way has anything to do with the city of Holton City, nor was it published by the city of Holton City. It was not written or sent out by city hall. Rest assured that most of its content is not true and does not reflect the way you really represent on council members of this council. The best I can tell, it was written by the same people or a group of people who brought negative press to the Holton City two years ago when I ran for reelection, bringing lies of me eating watermelon racially, or telling you that I was going to build a garbage dump in your backyard, which we did not do. This never happened, and it never will. This letter asks, who do we represent? We represent the citizens of Holton City. They're the ones that put us here. It addresses naming the dog pound after a person who did not finish her term. I voted for the work that this person did on the pound to make it become a reality, and not because of her political position, whether she was a mayor, whether she was a councilperson. It's not in my notes, but I will add this, when I first became in Holton City politics, she was the first ones that opened her arms and listened to me. And by her doing that, I got here. I didn't vote for her because of our friendship. It asked, will any other buildings be named after our friends? I don't know. You know, I don't know if any other buildings will or not. I know that I wouldn't want to name one after an enemy, you know. I don't see the reason in this. It accused me of using city resources and less than gaining a citizen on someone who voiced opinion against this. Open records request on a person that had filed ethics charges against this body, had nothing to do with this animal shelter at all. It also asked if the item was debated. It wasn't debated. It was brought to this council by a citizen. A citizen outside of this council came to us and made this suggestion to more than one council member, that this be done. It was accused that this council worked on this outside in separate quarters. I was out of the country for two weeks prior to the meeting. I had no idea that this was even on the agenda. I didn't pick my agenda up until Sunday. The vote was 7-0. The most important part of this letter is the letter that this sent bears no signature, no return address, no any credit for what they did. We get $10 for every meeting we sit up here. It's hard to spend all that money. I have not cashed a check since May 2000 to tell you how hard it is to spend. This is just a petty ploy designed to make the council look bad. Who wrote the letter? Apparently someone who hates Nancy Watkins, or apparently somebody that hates this council. Do these people care about Holton City or you? Not a chance. They'd do open records requests to find wrong things on this board, day after day. One former elected official at this time has cost the city over $3,000 of your hard-earned tax money to dig up trash against John Williams and the rest of this council. These people aren't happy. They won't be happy with nothing. They did not like the bond election that passed by better than 70%. Any item on this board looks at the second guess about what they do. We were elected by a majority, and a dozen or so continue to cause a problem and a cost. They just can't turn loose. They don't want your city to prosper. They want you to say where it's been for the last 50 years. Where will it end? No one knows. Are these people wanting to run your government? We're on the verge of pulling ourselves out of a 20-year rut, and I want to say, and I'm not saying the council members have been here for 20 years, because we have had some good council members during the last 20 years, but we've got to take advantage of the items that we have before us now. I've been contacted by dozens of citizens and encouraged me to hold my ground on this and don't give in. Its name is just a political game, just as the transfer station was in Daisy Lane and Watermelon. Who are these people? They don't volunteer, they don't donate, they don't help, and when they write these letters, they don't even sign their name. I'm sticking with my guns on what I said to start with. I'm not changing it. We voted on it December. It's the Nancy P. Watkins Animal Care and Adoption Center, and I'm holding my ground.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to take the liberty of reading from a prepared text tonight. I'm going to speak from the heart. I've been given credit for making the motion that was voted on by this council. I wish to God I would have made that motion. Unfortunately, I was not able to do so. Councilmember Henderson beat me to the punch on that. I did, however, request that he amend his motion, and I'm very glad that he did. We've been accused of doing this for all of the wrong reasons. Nobody stopped to look at why we really did it for all of the right reasons. There are over 200 citizens' names that appeared on the petition that we've got up here tonight. I have received one email from one citizen, and I'm not certain that the email came from this person, because I didn't bother to ask him. In dissension of this, if you're weighing the odds, folks, that's over 200 to 14. I was put in this position by the majority of the voters of the city of Holton City. They did not see fit to run a candidate against me in my reelection bid. That right there in itself would tell me that I must have been doing something right, or there's nobody that wanted to make that $10 that John Williams has been sitting on over here for so long. But if you'd like to come up, put your $50 up, come up and sign up against me, and may the best man win. I'm tired of the political games. I'm tired of people backstabbing. I'm tired of people saying things that aren't true. Unlike Mr. Williams, I will name names. Mr. G. H. Rumbow approached me, and he approached Mr. Henderson about naming the animal shelter after Nancy Watkins. That was from a citizen. It did not come from me. It did not come from anyone on this panel. After much deliberation, and to be honest with you, on the spur of the moment, it was decided that, you know, if you're going to name a room for someone, name a shelter for them. I don't have a problem with it. There's over 200 people out there that don't have a problem with it either, and I would venture to guess that there's probably more than that that don't. Now, there's probably 10 or 12 that do, and to those people, all I can say is I'm sorry. If that's the biggest thing you've got to worry about, is what Holton City names their animal shelter after, then I urge you to get a life.
Other discussion on the motion that is before us tonight? Okay, there being none. The motion on the floor, made by Councilmember Patino and seconded by Councilmember Avery, is to vote to uphold the previous vote. If you will, gentlemen, register your vote. Everyone got their vote registered? Of those who voted, two have voted in favor of this, and I will ask our attorney, in view of the fact that the others have abstained, the motion stands, the motion stands with those two votes.
You've got no action taken on this item, with only two people voting.
Okay, so there's no action. In effect, this upholds the previous motion.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Williams?
Mr. City Attorney, can you tell us where we're at now? Is this a dead issue, or will it be put back on? Is it out of the way? Is it named, or is it? Just tell me where we're at.
What can I tell you, Councilmember Williams? I can't predict whether we'll be back on the agenda or not, but my legal opinion is, this is not a legal issue. The vote has been taken, and legally, the council has voted to name the animal shelter for Nancy Watkins, and that will be given legal effect.
Does it stand that way?
Excuse me?
Does it stand that way?
It stands that way, yes.
Thanks, Counselor.
Let me make a statement, if I might, in regard to this. I'm the one who placed this item on the agenda to begin with. The council has repeatedly demonstrated its intent with regard to this, to uphold the previous motion, and that is the bottom-line effect. This motion, this item, will not be placed back on the agenda by the mayor. If it's placed back on the agenda, it will be by someone else. We have a lot of things to do in Holton City, and the council has expressed its intent, and it's time for us to move forward. The next item on the agenda is item number 33, resignation of board members. Councilmember Patino?
Yes, I just want to thank you for your consideration and your understanding on that item.
Resignation of board members. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I have a resignation from the zoning board of adjustment by Chief Rumbo.
Okay, gentlemen, you've heard the recommendation from Mr. Hurley regarding a resignation of G. H. Rumbow. Will you vote to ratify that resignation?
Don't let him resign.
And Mr. Patino, okay, we have a unanimous vote. Any other resignation of board members? Appointments, or reappointments of board members? Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have an opening on the EDC, and our chairperson with the Economic Development Corporation, Sharon Elias, has recommended a Rick Thornton, 5109 Stephanie, for us to ratify his appointment to the EDC.
Okay, you have heard the recommendation by Councilmember Henderson. If you will vote to ratify his appointment. Okay, and that is a unanimous ratification. Councilmember Hurley, I believe you had an appointment?
I've got an appointment to the ZBA, a gentleman that is well-qualified, appears to be, Mr. Coleman Sutton, who lives 4,001 Creech, and he's retired electrical inspector for the city of Fort Worth, and has previous experience as chairman of the electrical board in about six years.
Okay, you have heard Councilmember Hurley's recommendation for this appointment. If you will, vote to ratify, or vote, express your desire on ratification. Any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions? Okay, there being none tonight. Item 35 is attendance requirements, and there's no action taken since all of us are present. The council will move into executive session, or closed session at this time pursuant to Section 551.071, 072, and 074, and will reconvene in regular session to take any action discussed in executive session.